Morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines.
Here.
Brettafeld.
Here.
Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Olivier.
Here.
Brandell.
Here.
Soria.
Here.
Next, we'll go on to the invocation, so if everyone, um, please stand up and then remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray. Father God, you are good and your mercy endures forever. And God, we thank you for this day that you have called us here to do your work. Father, would you bless everyone who occupies a seat, who makes decisions for this city? Would you give them wisdom and discernment to govern accordingly? Father, we thank you for this great city. And we pray that this city would be known by your peace, that this city would be known by your kindness, that the city of Fresno would be known by your love. And God, we thank you for the roles that you've called each of us to play in making that so. Father, would you bless us this day as we give this meeting to you? May your kingdom come, may your will be done in Fresno as it already is in heaven. In Jesus mighty name, we thank you and we pray. Amen.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are a few changes. Eleven o'clock or soon thereafter, a special meeting notice regarding a resolution opposing Assembly Bill 3218 will be held. Also, file ID 180325, 52, I'm sorry, which is item 3C. Actions pertaining to the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility Six Million Gallon Finnish Water Reserve Project, Council District Six, has been removed from the agenda and will be placed on the March 22 agenda, rejecting all bids per staff. And finally, item 5B, closed session regarding Mountain Cascade Incorporated versus the City of Fresno, has been removed from the agenda. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion passes 7-0. Next is the consent calendar. Is there anyone, um, any councilmember that would like to pull an item for discussion? And then if anything is pulled, we will hear it after councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Brettafeld.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 1D.
Great, so item 1B has, will be, oh, D. Item 1D will be heard after councilmember reports and comments. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion? Oh, we'll go out to the public. Um, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none. And the screen is clear, we'll go ahead. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar? So there's a motion by Councilmember Chavez, a second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion passes 7-0. So now we'll go on to council, actually, approve the minutes, excuse me. Are there any changes to the minutes of March 17, Madam Clerk? So there's no changes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Councilmember Steve Brandell. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have ceremonial presentations. And first up, we have presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month by Councilmember Clint Olivier.
Steve, come on down.
Go. Go, Steve. Go. Go.
All right, folks, this is Sassy. And, and, there you go, Steve. I got a navy blue suit on, so I'm gonna let Sassy.
What a nice cat, this Sassy.
Sassy is available for adoption right now. Can come down and get, are you guys running a special, or?
Uh, not currently. Um, uh, we're not currently running a special, but we do, uh, run adoption specials several times throughout the year. Uh, but right now, adoption fees for cats are eighty dollars if they're under two years old, or sixty dollars if they're over two. Uh, Sassy is about one year old, so she's still fairly young. She's, as you can see, she's very sweet, very cuddly and mellow. She's gonna be a good lap kitty.
All right, and so the special that we're running is that I will pay the adoption fee for Sassy. So if there's a good home out there, somebody watching, this is a very sweet cat, um, I will pick up the cost of adoption, but you have to be a good home. Um, and, and take good care of this cat. So, um, somebody, please give this sweet kitty a home, and you guys do such a great job at SPCA. Thank you.
You have a cat.
I already have one.
Well.
No, I can't have a cat, I have a dog.
Terry Cox back here has twelve. So you're still like.
No, I'm not getting any more cats, but you can get a cat today, and I will pick it up, pick up the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have recognition of University High School Academic Decathlon Team by Councilmember Paul Capriolio and the Mayor's Office.
Well, good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. One more time, good morning, everyone. There you go. It is a great morning, and it's a great morning because of these young people here and their families and what they bring to our community. So it's an honor for me to bring this ceremonial presentation to City Council today for this amazing team of young talent. So they've won their fourth consecutive Fresno County Academic Decathlon. It's fantastic. Four in a row. These people are unbeatable. So not only they won four in a row, they scored a perfect fourteen out of fourteen. How often does that happen? So you, you guys are great. So, uh, in fact, that's never happened before in the history of the decathlon, so you guys are trendsetters. So the next team's got a lot of work to do to stay up with you guys, for sure. So, uh, not only is University High in my district, but, uh, the team captain lady here was on my, she was on my youth board, and she did a great job there. And I understand she won a gold medal for her speech. And did you want to give your speech today? We teased her about that earlier. We teased her about that earlier. No, we're not gonna put you on the spot, so. Uh, Team Coach Sean Kenfield and Superintendent Yovino, thank you guys for everything you've done with this team and taking them to the promised land and all the good work they've done thus far. So we're proud of each and every one of you. And, um, Coach Yovino and Superintendent, I'm sorry, Coach, well.
I could never coach the team. I don't have that talent.
So, uh, we would like to have, um, the public have a little bit of an idea how complicated this is. This is a yearly competitions where students are required to study a thick binder full of ten subjects, um, art, economics, essay, interview, language, literature, math, music, science, social science, speech, plus a super quiz, which is an amalgamation of all the subjects. That's, that's absolutely incredible. And your students as well. This isn't the only thing you study, right? Seems like it, my goodness. And all the students have to compete in all those areas, as I understand it. And the theme this year was Africa. So, um, it's just an incredible accomplishment that you folks have done for, for yourselves and the university and Fresno State, which is in my district, University High is in my district. Uh, and so proud of all of you and proud of your families. We're all listed together as a team, so congratulations to the family as well. So you guys are doing an outstanding job. Jim, you wanna say a few words?
Well, sure, I just thank you for recognizing them, President Soria, members of the board. Thank, I thank you so much. We, this team is amazing. Now, they talked about four titles in a row in California. You may not know, they won ten national titles in a row, correct? Yeah, I thought so. So not only locally, but nationally. So, um, if you're ever worried about our future, you know, you don't need to look far. They're right here. Anyway, congratulations to all of you. Thank you for recognizing them today.
My pleasure. So we have some certificates of recognition, and Coach, uh, would you like to come up and say a couple of words and receive the first certificate of recognition from the City of Fresno?
Thank you. Well, uh, councilmen and to the Fresno City Council, first off, thank you very much for having us here. What I always think is great with these situations is that the students get to recognize, uh, government. And one thing that most people tend to forget is while we go on our daily lives, uh, our democracy's at work, and this is a great learning experience for our students to see how our city runs, how our democracy runs, and how our civilization runs. And so, thank you very much for this opportunity for us to be here. Secondly, as has already been stated, it's pretty difficult to fathom just the total workload that takes place, because at University High School, the students have a very rigorous curriculum. They have to take college courses and advanced placement courses. In addition, they have rehearsals after the normal day is done. So you have six classes, and you have a couple hours rehearsal after school, then instead of going to dinner, that's when we do decathlon. And so it goes on regularly again and again and again and again. And so the credit is to these remarkable students who are able to put up with this. The parents quite often are picking up their kids at eight o'clock at night and making the drives back home. And then we go on from there. We go on to the state competition, and we've also won the Small School State Competition ten years in a row. And then we look forward to going on to the nationals. And one last thing, we are a small school, but we have the tenth highest score in the state, regardless of school size, and every school that's above us has enrollment in excess of four thousand students. Our enrollment's about four hundred and seventy-five. And so when you look at all those situations, that kind puts in perspective just the accomplishment of these fine young men and women. And so they inspire me. And so when you get to see them in action, I think you'll be inspired too. Thank you very much for having us here.
Nice one, applause, thank you. Come up here, and I'll read some names, and we'll hand out some certificates. Uh, John Randall, come on up, young man. And next, we'll honor a lady. Come on up, Lady Everett. Thank you. And stay here, please, we'll take a photo. Next is Artie Patel. Artie, come on up. Congratulations. Ethan, come on up, my, my friend. And then Miranda. There you are, Miranda. Ethan, good job, man. Alexa, Alexi. Alexi or Alexa? Alexi. Says, got it. Andrew. And Doug. And who am I leaving out? I didn't leave you out, Barry, come on up. Thank you. And Doug? Man, I love the way you dressed for this occasion, buddy. Ah, fantastic. Come on up and, uh, there you are, sir. And come on a little closer, and we'll do a photo op, and then we'll do one with the parents as well. This is a fantastic moment, not only for the university and my district, but the City of Fresno. National champs right here. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you all in a few weeks. I'll see you in a second.
One more round of applause.
Congratulations again. Keep representing us. So next, we have a proclamation of Southeast Police Officer David Stanley Day by City Councilmember Chavez.
So we could have Officer Stanley, welcome. And is your wife here today? Would you like to come up? And then Ross, come on up too?
So, one of the things that impressed me a lot about the program that you guys are doing at Roosevelt, and shameless plug, I, I am a Roosevelt alumni, as is Councilmember Capriolio and the mayor. I always plug that in every chance I get. Um, but the, the piece that impressed me the most was the mentoring component. And it's, it's easier to donate money, but it's a lot harder to donate time. And you are fundamentally changing the relationship between our community and law enforcement in mentoring those kids and showing them that officers aren't just there to enforce the law, they're there to be seen as somebody who helps, somebody who you can go to for advice. Um, I've heard a lot of great things. Um, my good friend and, uh, classmate, April, is the vice principal there, and I'm very familiar there. In my previous, um, uh, life, I served as a Fresno Unified School Board Member, represented the Roosevelt area, so that's very near and dear to me. And, and I wanted to make sure that that is recognized, uh, your work in our community. We certainly appreciate it. We know that there's a lot of conversation in our community about gang violence and, and everything that our community faces and challenges, but your program, your approach is exactly the answer that's gonna be used to combat that. Um, it's not just the suppression piece, it's the intervention, but more importantly, the prevention piece. And so we wanted to recognize you today. I'm gonna read a proclamation, but before I do that, our good friend Ross Clark is gonna say a few words about our program, the history and everything. And then this morning, I found out that she is a fellow elephant lover. Go ahead, Ross.
Oh, good morning, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words. Let me give you a little background of how we got where we are. Thirty-four years ago, a small group of people in Southeast Fresno wanted to honor a police officer who had gone beyond the call of duty. The leader of that happened to be the butcher at Hanoi's Market. And so we decided that that's what we would do, and we would call it Officer of the Year. And we met, uh, we had a dinner, I think it was pasta, at Masqueta. Uh, anyhow, it has expanded. We, the next year, we brought in each one of the areas, Oliver knows. And, uh, during Edwin's Justice Term as, uh, Chief, we decided to expand it to the entire police department and make it not only officers, but also Employees of the Year. And we've been doing that for thirty-four years. We, this, two weeks ago, we honored twelve police officers and one volunteer as Volunteer of the Year. We had about three hundred people at our banquet. It was one of the best we've had. And David happened to be from Southeast Fresno. So, uh, he is a nineteen-year veteran of the department with experience in patrol, magic, multi-agency, gang enforcement consortium, CNT crisis negotiator, team member, mobile field force ma, a team member, and he is currently assigned as a Student Resource Officer at Roosevelt. Uh, he has worked as a student, uh, at SRO, we ought to call him, at Phoenix Secondary School, a program for at-risk students in Southeast Fresno, and currently is assigned to Roosevelt. He is known for building relationships to help break down barriers between law enforcement and students through mentoring. And during one Thanksgiving holiday, a student whose family was facing financial hardship could not afford food, Stanley provided a full dinner for the family. He is also founder of Gangland Redemption Ministries as a partner of Valley Dream Center. He's been leading an adopt-a-block program in neighborhoods around Valley Dream Center since 2014 through Gangland Redemption Ministries that provides free bicycle repairs, community cleanups, prayer walks, block parties, and a Laundry of Love program. Pastor David Stanley has been a guest pastor at Valley Christian Center. He was awarded the 2017 Top Cop from the Fresno Exchange Club. He has given a gang prevention presentation to the Holy Cross Summer Enrichment Program for the last three years, and he put together a presentation, Teen Brain, and has presented to all SSR and SNRO and school administrators. He also organized the last chief's youth advisory board meeting at Roosevelt High School and has helped with the student contact assessment report. What an, what a history. What a great thing out, he's out there working in our community, and he's a top cop. Thank you very much. Our community thanks you. Thank you.
So with that, we will, um, read the proclamation, Officer Stanley. It is with great distinction and pride that we join in honoring and congratulating you for all your civic involvement, dedication, and commitment to the Southeast Policing District and the City of Fresno. Our city gratefully acknowledges your many notable accomplishments throughout your nineteen years on the force. Your invaluable service has contributed to making our city safer, and you have, and you have served as a role model in our community. Serving as a School Resource Officer and Crisis Negotiator for Fresno Police Department while mentoring and coaching at-risk youth and adults during your free time truly makes you an exceptional peace officer. Please accept a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the City of Fresno for your service and continued efforts to make Fresno a safer community. So on behalf of the City of Fresno, Mayor Lee Brand, and the City Council, we hereby proclaim Thursday, March 8, 2018, to be Officer David Stanley Day in the City of Fresno. Congratulations.
I, I would like to say a few words. After all, I am a pastor. I, first of all, I, I do want to, uh, thank, uh, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who taught me that, uh, through his experience and what he did, that he always showed compassion before he showed conviction. Always looking out for people and their needs and their felt needs before he started to try to get down to the other stuff that was going on. To the leaders of Fresno, the, the folks are making these decisions. Since 1998, I've been here, and I feel like we are on the most positive paradigm shift that we've had here in Fresno since my experience of living in this city. So thank you for all the work that you're doing in this city and helping us to be a, a more viable, um, example to the rest of the state as well as the rest of the nation for all the hard work you do. So thank you very much for doing that. And then also, uh, my team, all of, all of, uh, my supporters from, from my department, thank you guys so much, because quite honestly, it's, it's a team effort, all that we're doing. I'm, I'm one example of many people that are, have many stories to tell of going out and helping out that family that's stranded, broke down on the side of the road. We don't hear those stories very often, but they are happening on an ongoing basis. So thank you very much, and thank you, Councilman Chavez, for this acknowledgement.
I'll take the mic back, 'cause you are a pastor. Let's get a quick picture over here. You, you in the middle, officer, holding the proclamation.
I'm not short on vertically challenged.
Hey, hey, Louis? Absolutely. Let's bring the, let's bring the team up. And Councilmember Chavez, you mind if I say a couple words?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
And, and while the team is coming down, I, I just wanted to take a moment and say, and I, I don't do this very often, but I, I had the, the, uh, opportunity to work with you, Dave, uh, when I was a police officer, and just to the listening public, uh, the, recognizing you today is no small thing in my eyes. I, I understand that everything you do goes above and beyond what a normal police officer does. It's extraordinary work, and it really should be a model to, you know, not just Fresno Police Department, but to police officers throughout the nation. What you do exemplifies the highest quality of police work, and is what it's meant to be. And I thank you for your service to this department. I thank you for what you do for this community. I know, I know the type of man that you are, and you take that into this job, and, and enough can't be said. So Councilmember Chavez is a, is a great councilmember, and you are well to recognize him, Louise. This is, this is a good man right here. Thanks, Dave.
Serving the Roosevelt area.
Next, we will go to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Councilmember Brandell.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to, uh, mention, for anybody who's been hiding under a rock, that yesterday we opened up the Northwest Policing District Building on Shaw and Marks. Uh, many are out there, Council President Soria, which essentially, really, we share that, that district building, because your, your district lines are right there across the street. So I think it's gonna be a great boon for that neck of the woods. It will decrease response times for Northwest Fresno. I've been especially concerned as, as a council president, and Councilman Baines have as well, for response times west of ninety-nine should help, uh, in that regard. And also, to really help the business owners that operate along Shaw Avenue. They need a boost in the arm as well. So having, uh, our police force, um, right there is gonna be a great thing. And so I have a, a number of people I wanted to thank. Of course, Chief Dyer and his complete team, and Ross, you were out there with us yesterday for that ribbon cutting. But also Captain Burke Farah, who's just been a real special, you know, we just recognized a special officer here, and I believe Captain Burke Farah is also a special asset to this community in our city. Um, but, uh, he did a great job. Officer Jason Musser, who kind of designed the building and, and brought it around, and it's just really interesting that we have a police officer that knows so much about, uh, building projects. I think I heard that this was the third, um, policing district building that he had kind of had a hand in designing, so that's fantastic. Uh, I'd like to recognize the Zinkin family, who partnered with the City of Fresno and allowed that building and that piece of land to be available to us. That was great. And Mayor Brandon, um, City Manager, uh, Will McQuan Schecter, just, um, getting this across the finish line. We just really appreciate everything you've done. So it was a great day yesterday, and I look forward to great things. They have a community room that is open to the public, so. so I think that's also very important. So it was a great day yesterday.
Next, we have Councilmember Paul Capriolo.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'd like to adjourn today's meeting, uh, in memory of a great man, uh, Judge Gene Gomes. Not only was he a, a, a great person and a great judge, but he was a great friend. And, uh, he'll sorely be missed, and my thoughts and prayers are out to his family. Uh, he was a phenomenal individual, a trendsetter in the judicial system, and he was with the Fifth District Court of Appeal. Uh, next, on a better, a little higher note here, uh, congratulations to all those that were recognized on Monday. Several of us were at the Restaurant Association Awards Dinner. Food was fabulous. We, we ate like kings and queens, and, uh, everyone was humbled when they accepted their awards. It was really amazing, 'cause these are really fantastic people in our community, and they were recognized. Restaurant Tour of the Year was Lorraine Salazar from Sal's Mexican Restaurants. Best Fine Dining, District Four, the Annex Kitchen, no, I'm sorry, we're trying to get them over there. Uh, Best Sports Bar, Mad Duck. Best Steak, Fleming's. Uh, Best Banquet, Pardini's. Best Catering, Love and Garlic. They do an excellent job. And, uh, Best Craft Brewery, Mad Duck Craft Brewing Company. So there's all sorts of people. Great event. We all had a good time, enjoyed it, uh, and, uh, look forward to it again next year. And then along, uh, Tuesday morning with my colleagues, we were up at the crack of dawn, literally, and, uh, we're at the Celebrity Corner of Blackstone and Shaw, selling newspapers for Kids' Day. And, uh, the goal was $650,000. Last year was $630,000. Currently, they're at six hu- uh, $628,611. But you can continue to contribute to the Kids' Day fundraiser all this week, and then we'll hit that magic mark of $650,000. I think over the last eight years, no, they've raised $8 million over the last 30 years for our community and the kids, uh, in the Central Valley. Uh, last, I wanted to thank the Magic Team. They did great work, um, cleaning up the mess that was at, uh, the University Inn in my district. Uh, we received multiple calls from concerned parents, business owners, students that live near the area, and I want to thank the Magic Team for, like I said, cleaning up the mess, as well as, uh, looking forward to their continued proactive work. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I just have a couple, um, brief announcements, you know, along with my colleagues. I did, I was at the grand opening, and I believe that, um, Councilmember Brando already thanked all the people that made this possible. Um, so I will say that I joined, um, that event in excitement for what will happen to the response time for areas that I represent west of the 99. The only thing that I will mention, 'cause I did get a couple concerns from the residents that live in the area of Dakota and Hughes, that as we, um, now have moved the police station, that we don't forget about that neighborhood, because I know that the presence was very key to them. And so that we just continue to watch carefully, um, in terms of that neighborhood, 'cause it is kind of borderline. Um, so that's all I will ask in terms of the, the administration and our police department. Um, next, I will also just kinda, excuse me. I want to thank all those folks that participated in Read Across America. I had the opportunity to go out to Williams and Daly Elementary to read, um, to a number of kids. And so it's always a great day, um, to see volunteers across the city, um, join our schools, and really, um, motivate our young, our young children to read and, um, and read some fun books. So that was a great experience. And I also got a special invitation, I don't know if you all remember, but we had Aspen Valley Prep come, um, where I, I introduced them a few weeks ago, and so they had their Leadership Day. Um, they are located in District One, and I was able to go out and visit, um, and see the remarkable work that these young people, um, do in their school. And so it was just very impressive, um, how they do things there. They do, it's obviously a charter school, so they do non-traditional things that I believe, um, have helped these kids be successful. So very happy also to have participated in Kids' Day, um, and joining several of my colleagues here, um, in supporting, raising funds for our kids in the valley. Councilmember Bretafeld.
I have a couple of questions for a city attorney. Um, Doug, in, if a council member or the council, uh, requests, um, a city document, any city document, don't they have the authority, the responsibility, the right to review any city document, except obviously if it's, it's a legal issue?
Uh, yes. The council is essentially the board of directors of the city, is in charge of the city. The council would certainly be entitled to see any document that would be subject to a PRA request, a public document. In addition to that, they would ta- the council would be entitled to see anything that's not legally protected. Certain personnel records, attorney-client privilege, where the privilege doesn't necessarily apply to them in that instance, that type of thing.
Okay. So, so any document short of something that's a PRA or illegal document?
Anything that wouldn't be legally protected, yes.
Okay. So, uh, when I request a document, or a council member requests a document, does it have to be reviewed by the administration before I get that document? Does it have to be, uh, reviewed for content, fact, grammar, um, anything related to my desire to get, get that document?
Well, if it's a document the, and the council's entitled to see, then that would be without qualification.
Without qualification. Okay. So I'd like to know then, from you, city manager, what is your policy when I or other council members request documents, um, regarding any issue in the city?
Um, so councilmember, if the document exists, we get it to you right away. And, um, I assume you were speaking, uh, I, I assume you're speaking about the real estate business?
Yes.
And so we provided with, to you last week, the Real Estate Strategy Report that was presented to council in December of 2015, along with the list of properties associated with that document and how that document was formed. I've offered to meet with you on that, but we are working from that document with the, um, uh, Cushman and Wakefield, um, on our real estate, uh, asset strategy, and I'm happy to meet with you. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, so if I have it, I will provide it to you.
Well, what we got was a presentation that was given to the council. What we didn't get was the 40-page document that had the listing of all the assets from 2015. That was a strategic plan. So we didn't get all the information we requested. We got a presentation that was given to the council in 2015, but not a listing of all the-
But the documentation that, that, that strategic plan was developed from, so-
But we didn't get a list of the assets that, that you have access to.
Can we meet, can we meet after the council meeting, and you and I can sit down and go over exactly what it is that you're requesting?
I think I've been very clear what I'm requesting.
I, I think it would be helpful if you and I had a few minutes to talk.
That's fine. But it is my expectation that when I request things, I don't need it screened by the city administration to get it. As the city attorney says, we have every right. This is the elected body to represent the city. Every document should be able to come to the city council without the city manager, the mayor, or anyone else screening it for us.
There's nothing that's been screened. You've been given everything that I have.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't given this document that was the strategic plan, a 40-page document. I was not given that.
That's what I, we gave you two we- two, last week.
No. I have, there's a list of 40, well, we can go through it. I wasn't given the-
We can go through it. I, I will make time today to meet with you. And I apologize if you feel that you haven't received what you've requested, but I think there's just a miscommunication.
Next, we'll move on to contested consent calendar. Item 1D.
D.
D, yeah.
D, okay. Yes, the question I have, we're, uh, you're asking us to approve a consultant agreement in the amount of nearly $300,000.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And it seems like, Greg, that this is to help us, um, move departments and vehicles and, um, I mean, maybe you can share a little bit more about exactly what it is you're requesting.
So basically, we're out of room at the MSC right now, uh, and it will allow for us to plan strategically to figure out who needs to move and where we need to move to.
Okay. We need a consultant to do that, Greg. I mean, this is not something that department heads can determine, can sit down together, can look at listing of spaces that we have. We have to spend $300,000 to determine where to move.
So at this point, what we're looking at is we, we've got public safety moving in, that has moved in. You've got DPU that is desirous to move out, and then reconfiguring all the space. So yes, we do need assistance with this one.
Okay. I, I don't know. I, I have great respect for the staff. I, I have a hard time with this. Um, I just feel like staff could be working, department heads could be working to figure this out without spending $300,000 to sort this out. For me, I, I can't support this. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to, to reject this.
Great. So before we continue with the debate, we'll go out to the public and see if there's any... Oh, is there a second, um, for this motion?
I'll ask a question.
Well, we're gonna go out to the public. Do you want to make a second for purpose of discussion?
I might second it, but I want to ask Greg some questions, so either way, it's fine.
So do you want to just make the motion for purpose of discussion? Is that what we have to do?
No.
Okay. So before, before we go out to the public, he can ask?
Yes, that's within the discretion of the council.
Perfect. Go ahead, Ann.
Hey, Greg, is it, is the item, is it, um, time-sensitive?
It is and it isn't. It is because we're ready to move forward, um, and we have some, again, we're out of space. I mean, I've got one staff person who I'm about to hire, and I don't have a place to put him. So in that sense, yeah, we're busting at the seams. So we need to move forward with this. This is something that we have put in the budget, uh, and we are working toward getting to this point, uh, and that's why we're here today, uh, uh, before you.
Okay. And then, uh, to follow up on Councilman Bretafeld's line of questioning, so it isn't just something like you need somebody to identify other locations and, I mean, really, if it was just that, maybe you could pull it off in-house, but it's really more about the layout of the building and so forth?
It is. It is taking all the tinker toys that we now have inside and figuring out what pieces go here, what pieces go there, what do you replace that with? Um, you know, as, as, let me give you an example. Uh, the 100-year-old, uh, fire safety facility, we've moved from East Street into the maintenance facility, but that caused a ripple effect in moving other pieces around. This would allow us to figure out what pieces stay at the MSC, what pieces go with DPU, what pieces go where.
Okay.
If I may too, Ann, Greg, thank you. Um, you know, the consultant brings a variety of disciplines that we don't have on staff and the capacity to help make this happen really quickly. And, and it's, it's very complex. It spans multiple departments, as Greg said. And we are, we're out of space for people, equipment, vehicles, um, storage space, you name it. And so we're trying to maximize our assets, um, and so this is going to help us get there.
And Wilma, so the same question to you then. So you really do believe this is not something we could do in-house? There's nobody that can-
Absolutely. It's a level of discipline, and then the capacity issue as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I guess we can go out to the public.
We'll go, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the dais. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And, and I appreciate, uh, the questions that Councilmember Brando asked. I think that I'm probably gonna go in a similar line, because you said something important, Greg, that the move from East Street over to the MSC caused the whole ripple effect. And, and I, and I think in and of itself, if I can just highlight that for a moment, as to probably why we need help. Because we, we, sometimes we do things and we make decisions internally without looking at a bigger picture, and it causes an effect probably exactly like that.
Correct.
Where, um, we're not designers and movers and what have you. We're a city, they're a transportation department, you know, we're councilmembers. So I don't necessarily think that when you're trying to involve multiple departments and moving the use of space, that somebody internally just may have that skill set. Uh, you know, I don't, I, I could see that being true. That's, I don't think, that's, that's not necessarily a skill set we hire for in the city. And, and the time when I think, when, when we use outside help is for those times when we really don't have a skill set internally, but a skill set's required. And when we make certain moves that cause ripple effects, now we're coming back and trying to probably clean some of that up. Um, so, um, I definitely appreciate the line of questioning, Councilmember Brando, uh, Bretafeld, rather. I think it's appropriate to ask, um, but I think that there are times, as in this case, when, when we just, there's no reason for us to have that type of skill set internally necessarily, uh, for making a big, making a big move like that. So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve, approve staff's item.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Baines and a second by Councilmember Capriolo. Does that, um, override the first motion? City Attorney? So he didn't get a second? So does that override?
If there's no second, the motion dies.
Okay. So the screen is clear, but I do have a couple questions, um, before. I will say that I'm a little torn, because I get one, you know, the concerns expressed by Councilmember Bretafeld in terms of, do we really need this? But then I understand that there's a, you know, time-sensitive in terms of trying to move, move things. One of the things that I wanted to note, and I've asked this before, um, not only to, to you guys, but in other instances, so I know that you guys put in the report that there was two bids, but you guys never provided the information on the second bid. And what I'd like to see, and, you know, I'll state it again for the record, and for all departments, that when you guys go out to bid, and you guys bring back those bids, that you guys actually provide that in the staff report, because that was not provided. Can you tell me more about the second bid, and why were the reasons that you guys chose? Was it higher? Um, primarily, I didn't really get that from the staff report, so if you can-
Let me defer to staff on that particular item. Dwayne Myers, our fleet manager.
Hello, Counsel. Uh, Dwayne Myers, Fleet Manager for Transportation. Um, primarily, when we went and evaluated the two, um, prospective, uh, clients, the, uh, we did it based on their proposal, um, and not so much on their cost. Um, I, to tell you-
So how much was the second bid, I guess? You're not answering my question.
Okay. Um, I do not have that answer with me.
Okay. So I, I will say that today I am not prepared to vote on this item, because I don't feel like we have the entire information. I think that's important for this council to know if there was a bid that came in lower, and if it came in lower, we need to know the reasons why you're choosing. So I'd like to see that. So I'm gonna make a motion to continue this item, to be able to have all the complete information. I would also ask the city administration, the staff, that when you guys are bringing forward various bids, that you guys, I think for the most part, it's done. You guys give us the bid evaluation sheet, and that wasn't included today in our staff report. So if you guys-
If I could, this, when we, this is not really a bid. It's really a request for proposal. So that's what we got, is a, is two proposals, um-
And we didn't, so we didn't get a price for the second one?
Um, so the way that I understand it works, um, is they present the proposals, um, with, and unfortunately, I took this project over in the middle of it, so I, I didn't, uh, see the price proposal for both of the, of these proposals, um, so I don't have that. But, well, we, we evaluated based on their proposals and what they presented to us, um, on how they would go ahead and do this, uh, project for us, um, and also based on previous projects that they have done, that, in, in their proposals. Um, and then, once we decided who we were gonna go with, based on that, then we went ahead and negotiated the price for that, for the, for the project. So that's, that's what I know.
Well, I guess I, I'm, I'm still concerned that I don't have all the information. So what I would, and we can, but we can vote. So I'm making a motion to bring it back. I'd like to have all the information. I'm not, you know, generally opposed to hiring consultants. I think that there's the right, you know, situations, and so I'd like to have all the information before moving forward. So I make a motion. I do have a second.
Council President, would it be helpful if we had, I have purchasing out in the audience, and we have Brandon Colette, who can maybe talk more about the process. And I apologize that that was not included in the staff report, um, but it was an RFQ.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Brandon or, or Todd, or either of you prepared to speak about the process?
Council President, I would, I would draw my motion.
So we can, we can bring it back if that's okay. So there, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to bringing it back? Seeing none. So if we can go ahead and-
So, if we can go ahead and bring it back and I'd, you know, be happy to meet with you guys. Thank you. Next, we will go to... Let me see. We have a 10:00 AM, so in three minutes. Yeah, let's go out to unscheduled communication. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment during this period? Unscheduled communication. We have you down, Ms. Cora. Perfect. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. We have about three minutes until... Or is the... Are you guys ready to present on the Item 3B, General Administration, Actions Pertaining to Improvements at Chichanci? Come on down then. So, this is Item 3B, Actions Pertaining to Improvements at Chichanci Park Funded by the Chichanci Park Capital Reserve Fund. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Council President, esteemed members of the City Council, administration, and our wonderful audience.
What about the residents of the City of Fresno?
Okay, the residents of the City of Fresno, too. All of them. We're here today to ask for approval to spend $1.2 million or authorize the expenditure of $1.2 million from the Capital Reserve Fund that was created by money we received from the sale of the team, back rent, as well as contributions from the new owners and the previous owners, to improvements to the stadium, to upgrade the fan experience, as well as to make it operate more efficiently and more effectively so the team will be more successful. They would like to get this done... They would like to get some of this work done for this season, which is why we're bringing it to you today. So, this would allow them to go forward to get the construction plans done that then they can bring to us for approval. The actual procedures going forward on this program will be dealt with in the new lease that we are working on with them, and we hope to bring that back to you March 22nd. If not March 22nd, it'll be the first week in April. So, I'm open to any questions.
Perfect. Thank you for your presentation. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. So, there's a motion by Councilmember Brettafeld, second by Councilmember Chavez. So, no one has punched up. Screen is clear. I just have one question, just so that the public knows. These are funds that have already, that we have set aside, that this council and the administration has worked. So, maybe you can explain.
There's $5.25 million in the Capital Reserve Fund set aside specifically for Chuck Chancy Stadium. And it's all money that was generated by the team or the stadium.
Okay, perfect. And so, today we're authorizing $1.2 million of it for improvements. Perfect. Does that include that unveiling that they did in terms of that seating?
Yes.
Area?
Yeah. That's their biggest project, is the left-field social area, which they hope to attract more younger fans to that, and those are seats they traditionally do not sell.
Okay, perfect. Okay, awesome. So, we have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Councilmember Olivier.
Ooh, hello. I just wanted to add that the folks over there at Chichanci are doing the right thing. I had a vacation last year where I went with my son and we went with a group of baseball executives and we toured Safeco Field in Seattle. And one of the things that I learned is that in many communities that are traditionally not communities where the fans are rabid baseball-centric fans, like San Francisco, New York City, even Los Angeles, some towns are baseball towns where people go to see the game. Other towns are not necessarily baseball towns. People go to the game, but not to watch the baseball, they go to be entertained. And so, we have one of those. I spoke to an executive from Syracuse, New York with the Syracuse... It's a AAA team, just like the one that we have. And he was telling me how he doesn't sell the baseball. He has... He built clubs and restaurants in the venue so that people could go and be entertained and have a beer and eat food and talk to their friends while the game was going on. Those fans aren't necessarily there to watch the game. They're there for an entertainment experience. This guy told me I advertise the mascot, I advertise giveaways, the food, the beverage, but I don't advertise the baseball. And so, this is the way... It's a national trend and Safeco Field is actually ripping out... It may... The project may be done by now, but they were ripping out luxury suites to put in restaurants and bars. So, what you will see in the future in the sport is a stadium as an entertainment venue where there's a game happens to be going on, but there are a number of options for you to pursue. So, it's because of... I learned all this that I know that we're on the right track at Chichanci Park. We talk about getting people to go down there. Right now, it's a kind of an aging venue that doesn't necessarily accommodate those who want to do something besides just sit there and watch baseball. So, we're on the right track and I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. So, there's... Sorry, I know. So, there's a motion and a second.
Council President, and I'll just add for it to edify my council colleague, who I care for very deeply, that that's actually true, what's happening around the country with stadiums. I've noticed the same thing with AT&amp;T Field where they literally... AT&amp;T Stadium, where they added a bunch of features for the gamegoers, even if they don't go to the game. So, literally, a person can go and enjoy a restaurant or a nightclub or a bar and never even have to go into the game. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. I think this is... We're going in the right direction. Happy to second.
Perfect. So, we have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I also add that a week from Saturday, March 17th, will be the kickoff of Fresno Football Club in Chuck Chancy Stadium, 24-game soccer season. So, there'll be a press event and I will make sure our office lets you know what time and where it is.
You hear that? Councilmember Capriolo? We were all invited.
Will the mayor be doing the first kick?
That's cool. Great, thank you. So, we will go on to the 10:00 AM hearing. It's a continued hearing to consider the official plan lines for the South Temperance Avenue alignment from East Jensen Avenue to State Route 180 and related environmental assessment in Council District 5.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. We're presenting the official plan line for Temperance Avenue from Jensen Avenue to State Route 180. Most of this area is currently a two-lane roadway. There are two areas where Temperance has been widened between Kings Canyon and Freeway 180 and also near Butler Avenue. Temperance in this area is currently all striped for two southbound lanes. There is an existing traffic signal at Kings Canyon. Road in Fresno County is planning a new signal at Jensen and Temperance in the near future. The circulation element from the 2035 general plan designated this segment of Temperance as a six-lane super arterial. Super arterials are designed to accommodate large volumes of traffic. Other super arterials are Jensen and Willow in some parts of Herndon, although most of Herndon is designated as an expressway. Super arterial is very similar to expressways, but super arterials allow access with driveways and local streets. Temperance was designated as an expressway in the 2035 or 2025 general plan, but was downgraded to a super arterial in the 2035 general plan, primarily because of the existing homes, existing local streets. Was determined that it would not be feasible to keep it as an expressway. Official plan lines are for planning purposes only. No construction is planned on Temperance at this time, at least not as a capital project. We do have one subdivision that's being built on Temperance. They will be widening Temperance near the railroad tracks and improving the railroad tracks. That's a project that Pulte Homes is working on. Temperance in this area does need a plan line, and the reason is because to widen it, we're just not able to widen it on the existing center line evenly to each side. That's because there's existing railroad tracks and also because there's existing subdivisions that were built in the county that would be impacted greatly if we stuck with the existing center line. So, the plan line was prepared to avoid as much impacts as possible to existing homes and also to work around the railroad tracks and some high-voltage power lines that are in the area. This is a public hearing, but we're recommending for your adoption of this plan line. Concludes my report.
Thank you. So, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Chavez? Okay. Sir, come on up. You can, if you can state your name and your... And the address for the record, you will have three minutes.
My name's Charles Sells. I'm at 1261 South Temperance. I'm one of the homes that's gonna be pretty impacted by this, and I realize that the road needs to get widened. I would contest that six lanes is kind of overdoing it when you look at the 180 freeway is only four lanes, Jensen Avenue is only four lanes, Clovis Avenue is only four lanes. So, that would be my big point of contention. And I have some pictures I'd just like to give you that show the front of my house and then I've coned off the plan they put into place. So, you can see how much I'm losing because I'm one of the few homes that actually has a front yard. So, you'll see that if you just... It's just two... It's two groups. So, that would be my only point, just that I think the six lanes is pretty extreme for a road that doesn't really go anywhere. So, that's it. Just if you could look at those pictures.
Where's the cone? Where are the cones?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I see.
Council President, so I actually had a meeting with Mr. Sells and asked him if he could bring some pictures just for visuals. I'm gonna ask some questions from staff. I think it'll clear up a little bit about what this is and what this isn't, but I just want to make sure that we get it into the record for our property owners there in the area.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Chavez?
All right. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Andrew, for meeting with me and our office and Scott Moser. I know that we've had a couple of conversations with regards to this project, proposal, I should say. I know that the tentative lines that we're drawing there are really intended to let folks know in the future that this is gonna be, at some point, a six-lane highway or street, I should say. But for now, I want to make sure we get... I don't have a time limit. We're gonna get some things on the record, too, because I know that Mr. Sells came and we met, had a chance to have a good discussion. He is 100% right. I mean, I think the configuration of his property, the frontage, that's a big hindrance to his entry point and all of that entails. And I just want to make sure that we get a couple of things on the record. When we met, we talked about the timeline. That's gonna be critical. I think Mr. Sells purchased his home five years ago, and so he's got little kids, he still wants to have his property being used there. I know that we talked about, what, 20, 25 years, Andrew, that this would materialize?
Yes. The, you know, the plan goes out to 2035, but it's not anticipated that all six lanes would be needed anytime soon. Really, the reason to go with the six lane, because we know that's the ultimate configuration. We want to make sure that any subdivision that's built or any new project is set back and doesn't build within future right-of-way. So, this is not a plan to widen the road right-of-way and it's likely that in front of his home, it would be a long time before it was six lanes. But if that house was demolished and somebody wanted to build a subdivision there, we'd ask that they set the subdivision back at that ultimate right-of-way line.
Sure. And as we've seen with the development out there, that might very well be an option, where you would have somebody come in and make a very generous offer for the property. But what I want to maintain here is make sure that, you know, his property rights are secured, that he is compensated should that happen, and I want to make sure we get that on the record 20 years or 25 years down the road. So, I wanted to make sure we enter that into the record for Mr. Sells. The other question I had was with regards to the disclosure, and I'll need City Attorney to weigh in. So, for these properties, there's a count of about 16 of them on Temperance. Would these property owners have to disclose the lines or is that something that's entered into the county record of deeds and escrow companies would have access to that?
Now, this would be a matter of public record and would not require individual disclosure.
Okay. And any property that the city takes, they would be 100% compensated, correct?
Yes. If the city ever widens the right-of-way, of course, the city would have to offer and pay fair market value for whatever that taking is. If it includes taking the entire property, of course, then they have to be fully paid for the property and potentially relocation costs, too.
Okay. And the reason I'm putting this in the record is I know that Councilmember Brandau will have this conversation with Veterans Boulevard, which is... This is kind of southeast version of Veterans Boulevard, but I know that Veterans Boulevard, would it be fair to say, will happen before any of this happens on the southeast piece, Andrew?
Well, we do have funding for Veterans Boulevard and we have... All except for one parcel has been acquired for Veterans Boulevard. Thirty-six parcels total have been acquired.
Okay, great.
We have funding, I believe, 2021, 2022, anticipating having it fully funded in our construction.
Great. Well, I definitely appreciate that, entering that into the record and then give Mr. Sells or any other property that needs any more clarification or something from the city, we'd be more than happy to provide that. And so, with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
There is a motion. Councilmember Baines. And second by Councilmember Brettafeld.
Thanks, Council President. Thank you, sir, for actually showing us... Showing us how much of your yard they're gonna take. How much is that? I'm sorry, I may have missed it in the staff presentation. How much of the yard? How much of...
I don't know if I have that dimension right offhand, but it's probably 40, 50 feet.
It looks like it may be more than that.
Good morning, Council. Scott Moser, Public Works Director. Just want to highlight two things on this particular property. One is that 26 feet of that line would be for the future multipurpose trail along Temperance Avenue, which is in the general plan. I would never anticipate a point in which the only purpose of acquiring and getting to that deeper line as shown would be for the trail. The curb line is much further out to just provide the roadway lanes. One other item I want to highlight, and again, this is in the agenda item, this is in the packet for the actual plan line layout, is what you have before you is a design that actually shifts the temperance alignment about 80 feet to the east to avoid impacts on this particular property. In other words, if you just took a straight line and did not attempt to thread the needle, attempt to minimize impacts, it would just simply be a full take. So, as this plan line meanders through, again, it keeps the design speed up what it needs to be for temperance, but it absolutely minimizes impacts wherever possible on the properties. I hope that answers...
No. You know, Scott, that was good that you offered, at least we know is for a trail as well and not just... I'll tell you, I'm struggling with this one, I want to be honest with you, and I have tremendous respect for Councilmember Chavez. This is a tough one, though, because I'm looking at, you know, our resident's yard and it's a pretty dramatic take. And even if it is 20, 25 years in the future, I mean, in some cases, people like to have generational family homes and that option could be severely impacted for a person's family. I know he just moved there, but we don't know what the future holds for him and his family.
and his family. But I, and, and I probably need to understand a little bit more and forgive me for, for maybe not knowing this more, but why do we need six lanes there? I mean, is it, is this, is this, we really think that this is a, a six-lane highway or road coming up?
Again, we have Jill Gormley, our city traffic engineer, engineer here as well, but it is part of the 2035 general plan MEIR in the traffic studies. For whatever it's worth, the city of Clovis does have Temperance as a six-lane facility north of Ashland. A lot of it's striped for four lanes today. There are some sections that are already six, and that continues down. I, I can definitely say to the council that any place we can have less lanes, if we can have four lane instead of six, we absolutely pursue that. That's less expensive, that's less to, for developers to pay for, less to maintain down the road. We, we wrestled with that very early on this, just on the general plan. Could we make it four? And absolutely, to have the level of growth, to have all the residential, the commercial, the industrial, everything in the plan, Temperance would not be able to accommodate that as a four lane. In essence, this is another Hernan, Veterans, Willow, Jensen-type facility, another Shaw Avenue, another six lane. That's, that's a long ways out, but that's, that's what's required by the general plan build-out.
Thank, thank you, Scott. Sir, can, can I ask you a couple of questions? How large is, and you may have said it, how large is your property, your?
It's just under two acres.
Just under two acres.
And so we, we had, we had looked, we looked for about three years before we found this property, and it's got a sports court in the back, it's got a pool, I got a giant treehouse for the kids. And so I wanted to give my kids that bigger property to run around. I have five sons, and so...
Oh, that's awesome.
And so we, we moved there.
You have a basketball team.
And, and but we, so we bought the property, that house was the original house that owned the whole block, and I'm talking, when I say block, I mean church to Hamilton, Armstrong to Temperance. So my barn actually has a PG&E bill that doesn't have an address that says Church and Temperance.
Wow.
So that's, so I bought it from a family that had lived there 40 years, built it up, raised their kids, and the house was on the market for less than a week, and I sat and talked with this, this woman, the Garcias, and she actually sold it to us for $10,000 less than she'd been offered by other people because she wanted another family to come in and do the same thing. So we moved in 30-year plan for me. I'm like, we're going to be here 30 years, when the kids are all gone, I retire, maybe at that point. I'm like, Mr. Garcia, maybe I'm too old to keep up with the two acres, and then I move. I was setting in plan on a freeway going in my front yard. So, and, but I understand the need for growth, I understand the need for the road to be safe, I understand the need for the road to be wider. My big contention would be that an extra 10 feet by dropping a lane would limit at least some of the impact on my property. And I do see that they do, you can only zigzag the line around so much before now you're affecting traffic patterns and speed, and I, I fully understand all that.
So you, you would be fine if they took 10 feet less?
I mean, I, I'm just looking to try to minimize the impact, like I said, because my plan was, when I acquired the house and the property was to be there. It wasn't to, to sell, you know? It was, it was to, like I said, it was like a three-year process for us to find the right location, the right fit. So this definitely, we weren't aware of it. I mean, I knew that it was a possibility that the road was obviously going to need to be wider. I certainly didn't envision six lanes, but...
Yeah. Hey, Scott, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and I, and I hate to do this from the dais, but... So the idea that he proposed of doing 10 feet less, is that even possible from you all's standpoint? I mean, is, is that even, is that even something that could be considered? It seems like he, he's just trying to minimize the impact, and it sounds like he gets the idea that we need to widen it, and I do too, I think we all do. But if you went 10 feet less, would that severely impact what the, the traffic pattern is or what have you?
Definitely. I think there could be 10 feet less within the trail area along that frontage, which would just limit the, someday the amount of trees and such that could go in. I want to highlight for the council that if we did not adopt this plan line, the current one on the books, the county plan line that was done years ago, would be a full take of the entire house.
Sure.
So what we brought before the council through a couple of neighborhood, community meetings, through the planning commission hearing process, again, yes, there is acquisition on the property, yes, the county did allow this to occur years ago, they allowed it to be built there, but...
Scott, let me ask you something. If, if we wanted to change the plan line by 10 feet less, as the gentleman suggested, could we do that today?
It could, it could be done with respect to the trail being narrower, but not, not...
As well, Baines, maybe we could jump in here. So, so one of the things that, that we're going to be looking at, and, and I can, I can see that my colleagues can get a gauge, I think what we could do is continue it, because if we change this, it's going to require other modifications. There's a big plant right kitty-corner from there, Liddestry, that also will be impacted. So the configuration needs to, needs to fit for, for all the properties. So if you guys are okay, we could postpone it. And top of line. Councilmember Chavez, I am completely fine with that. I, I literally am trying to struggle with how to get to yes on this, and I, so I completely will defer to you, and yes, if you guys could work, it sounds like the gentleman is reasonable to something a little bit less. Absolutely. But yeah, I defer to you. So what we'll do, what I'll do is I'll withdraw it, and I'll make a motion to continue the item. Second?
Opposition to continuing? Seeing none. So we'll go ahead and continue and bring it back in a future council meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Chavez, I'd like to be included in a, to hear about that, maybe Councilman Baines as well, so maybe...
Absolutely. And, and, and I mean, and Councilmember Baines just went through his own OPO last council meeting, so I know he, he had a little bit more experience. So with that, I think you'll be going through, to yours as well.
Council, is it being continued to a date certain? If not, they'll have to re-notice this?
Uh, next council meeting, I think, would work, which is, would be the 22nd. You're right. So let's do the first week of April, so I want to have a little bit more time to...
First meeting in April, same time?
Yeah, that works.
So it will be scheduled for April 5th, same time, 10:00 AM. Thank you. Next, we will go to our 10:05 appearance by Mary Esther Correa. Ma'am, if you'd like to come, make your comments about code enforcement. Constituent of District 7. Good morning, Mrs. Correa. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Mary Esther Correa, 3407 East Iowa. I live in my place, but anyways, I was born in, I was born in here and raised. But anyways, yeah, the code, the code inspector, I call him Affleat, but he, he came, he came after, that's why I call him after, because I don't know what happened to the, the main in, in code inspector, I don't know what happened to him, but they, they, they put in the scandal. For, I had five tenants within less than a year. I had to evict them because they were trashing my place, they didn't want to pay the rent, except blah, blah, blah. Okay, the last two were terrible, they did the most damage. But you know, I've, I've fixed all my places, I can call the insurance, I do have insurance, but then what, what they do is they're going to up my insurance and then cancel me, so I have to do it myself. Okay, so I went to the hearing, and, and Mr. Flores ruled against me. But then I looked at the paper that I got two days ago, that John Affleat said that I delayed too long to fix the last unit. Unbeknownst to him, I already had a tenant in between that that I fixed, and Chief called in, the Perez couple, they went in, they trashed, they didn't want to pay the rent, I evicted them, and they trashed the place big time. And John Affleat didn't even know that they were in there. And then he, I looked at the, they're still, they fined me $13,500, and all I do is come and evict and fix and fix and stay here and go. When I get overwhelmed, I go visit my sister in Visalia, and I stay there. Okay. And now, he made, they made, he made a big boo-boo, because he, he put two tenants together, and he said that I took too long to fix in August. I said, what the heck is this, August? August to, it passed, it passed, it, code inspecting on September 10. Again, it passed, I just passed February 14th, and then he's saying that I waited too long? Well, he made a mistake, and I'm going to not go for it. I'm sorry that I was upset, but, no, it's not your fault, but he has to go. He's scoundrel, he's witching, hunting, I'm being, and now, now I have the, the proof that there was two tenants, and he acted like it was one. No, I want you to know that. But now we're going to advocate for a better, uh, uh, city council member in section in, and my seven, uh, seven. I got a press, that's why I have to go, get out of here and go with my sister, because she's got, well, anyways, okay. Is my time up? Oh, okay. Okay, so I just wondered, I'm going to go to the new, I forgot his name.
Your time is up.
I have all the, I have all the flyers, all, all the, all the files, and I have to go look for them.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Correa, your time is up. We appreciate you coming and visiting us.
Yeah, thank you, but I know it's not your fault, but he has to go. He's a scoundrel and a witch hunter. They fined me another $2,000. Hello? When I fixed everything, he's crazy, a big guy, a witch hunter.
Next, we will go to item 3A. Award a five-year contract with the option for two one-year extensions for banking services for the City of Fresno Finance Department to Bank of America.
Good morning, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director/Controller. Before you this morning, for your consideration, is a banking services contract with Bank of America. The proposed contract has a five-year term with two one-year extensions. This contract is the product of a request for proposal process that began on August 3rd, 2017, when the RFP was issued. Five responses to that RFP were received. A seven-person committee was formed to evaluate the proposals. The committee's initial evaluation was based on the services proposed by each respondent. That evaluation eliminated three banks from further consideration, as those banks either did not offer certain services that the city needs for its banking, or offered an inferior level of service than the city currently receives. The committee then evaluated pricing offered by the two remaining respondents, Bank of America and Wells Fargo Bank. After evaluating the pricing, the committee negotiated with both Bank of America and Wells Fargo on their proposed pricing. The result of the negotiations was that Bank of America had a lower projected price for their services over the contract period than Wells Fargo. On the basis of the services and the pricing that they offered, the committee recommended that the banking services contract be awarded to Bank of America. Bank of America is currently the city's provider for banking services and has been for over 20 years. They provide a wide variety of services that the city utilizes, included, including automated clearinghouse processing, cash depositing, and check processing. The proposed contract will maintain all the services that the current, city currently receives from Bank of America. However, those services will be provided at a lower cost than what the city is currently paying. Assuming current activity levels are maintained through the life of the contract, it is estimated that the city's annual banking services costs will be reduced by 41% under this new agreement. Staff recommends the council approve the award of the five-year contract with two one-year extensions for banking services to Bank of America. I'm available to answer any questions you might have regarding this item. Thank you.
Great. So we will go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Lima. I, I appreciate the, the staff report. It's, it's very comprehensive, but I have a number of issues with it. You know, you know, I've said before that I feel that this, this is the greatest country on earth, there's no question about it. And I've also said that we, in my opinion, though some differ, we're, we're not the racist country that we used to be in the 1960s and 1860s. Got a lot more progress that needs to be made, but we're not that country. Yet, I also feel that when racism rears its ugly head, such as it did in Charlottesville, Virginia last year, such as when we had a sheriff in Arizona that racially profiled Hispanics, we need to speak out. It's very important that we address it, confront it, and call it out. Your recommendation is for Bank of America. Now, Bank of America just has been fined $2.2 million for racial discrimination, and they were racially discriminated against over 1,000 black job applicants. They found that the company's Charlotte office had racially discriminated against them, used unfair and inconsistent selection criteria, and so they've been fined over several million dollars. They also, Bank of America, has had unfair lending practices against black and Hispanic applicants. They gave higher interest rates, even though they met the same credit scores as white applicants. That is racially discriminatory practices. The same thing for Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo's also been cited and accused of preying on black and Latino homebuyers in the state of California. So I think that as the city of Fresno, we ought to call that out, and we shouldn't ignore that. And when they engage in systemic racial discrimination, when they profile people and charge them higher interest rates simply because of their color, we should not accept that, we should call it out. So I'm very troubled by this. There are many banking institutions, many lending institutions who don't engage in that practice. And, city attorney, I just want to ask you a question. Is there any problem with me voting on this? I own some stock in Wells Fargo. Can I vote on this, address this issue?
Well, first of all, I understand your stock ownership is relatively low.
Yes.
And second of all...
Yes, I don't, I don't have a 5% controlling interest in Wells Fargo.
Right.
I wish I did.
Second of all, this contract could not possibly be material to the stock price of either of these two companies.
So, okay. I just wanted, on the record for that, yes. And so for me, my motion would be that we reject the recommendation of Bank of America and Wells Fargo because of their discriminatory lending practices, and I would request that city staff come back with other alternatives for the council to consider, other banks, perhaps local banks here, but that would be my motion. We don't support companies that have engaged in this kind of practice.
And I'll have the, I'll have to second that, but I also want to allow the city manager to weigh in a little bit, too.
You know, council, my recommendation would be that we continue this item. I'd like to have time and, and discuss with staff the issue that you raised and, and how we proceed. So my recommendation would be to continue the item.
Come on in, then. I'm not sure. What, what would the delay do?
I would just like time to discuss with staff, so I'm, I'm just requesting that you continue the item.
I'd like to know just for what reason, because I'm prepared, that's not going to change for me in terms of the reasons why I'm not supporting this, and I, barring something that's critical, I'd like to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion to continue this item, if I have a second.
So there's a motion. Is there a second to continue?
I think we should continue.
And a second by Councilmember Brando. So there's a motion to continue, and do we have to vote on the first motion, because there was a motion and a second?
Now, the motion to continue is a procedural motion, you vote on it at first.
Okay. Perfect. So there's a motion, a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to continue the item?
Council, Council President, I, I actually had punched up, but maybe it didn't, I'm sorry if it didn't register, but I certainly wanted to make some comments before we, before we decide.
Okay, perfect.
One way or the other. First of all, I want to, uh, thank Councilman Brettafield for bringing this up. I found out about this last night, actually. I had not even known, I, I don't, I'm not a, apparently this has been all over social media or something like that, and my wife found out as well. She told me I better not vote for this today. So there's no way I'm supporting Bank of America. But I, I wanted to just say that in many ways, I want to agree with Councilman Brettafield when these issues of social and corporate consciousness come to before us as public bodies, they should be taken into account. We should be definitely contemplating the message that we send, and, and this isn't really directed at you at all, Mike, because I know, but more, more to us up here, we definitely should be, our votes actually symbolize a lot. It symbolizes the things we do support, it symbolizes the things we don't support. So I, I think that in many ways, we should have some consciousness with the things that we are supporting with our votes. So I probably, whether it's continued or not, and I don't mind continuing the item, but I would, I would, I probably could not be supportive of Bank of America even if it were continued and it came back. This is, this is a thing to me where we should be symbolizing what we stand for and what we don't stand for a, as, as a city. And, and clearly, racial issues have become a priority in this country yet again, sadly, but it's our, it's our point in history to stand up against these things. So, city manager, I wouldn't be able to support Bank of America either. And, and clearly, uh, racial issues have become a priority in this country yet again, sadly. But it's our, it's our point in history to stand up against these things. So, um, City Manager, I wouldn't be able to support Bank of America either, even if it came back and, and a continued item. I mean, if you guys want more time as a staff to work on it, I, I don't have any issue with that, uh, but I would not be supportive of them. And I would have, I, I, you know, and I'd like to, I probably would have some challenges with Wells Fargo, too, and, um, and, and frankly, the other issue is neither of these, you know, particularly in the case of Bank of America, they do very little investment of CRA in our community. You know, which is, which is the other thing that I thought about after, you know, it was mentioned to me that I could not vote for this and come back home. But, you know, I thought about, you know, Bank of America's investment, even, even in, in our community with their CRA dollars is, is not nearly enough. And so I think that even the criteria that we're looking at as far as the reasons that we select these banks and we're depositing, how much are we, how much do we, how much do we have in deposits in these banks over the course of it, of a, of a year?
We average about 15 to 20 million is what we have with them.
Right. So I mean, th- those are, those are sizable investments, you know, we think, and, and, and not that they need to invest 15 or 20 million and back into the community, but they, they certainly should be mindful, thoughtful, and conscious, um, and, and, and they aren't. So anyhow, I, I put that, so a- as you guys go back and you guys kind of huddle, City Manager and staff, you just, you just hear some of the thoughts that I have regarding the issue.
So, great, thank you. Councilmember Brando.
Yeah, real quickly, I do actually want to thank Councilman Brettafield for bringing it up. This, I had not even heard of this until your comments, right? And so, um, I really thank you for that, and Councilman Baines, you'd heard of it before as well. So I have not heard of this issue until it got mentioned by Councilman Brettafield. So thank you for that, but I, I need to do my due diligence on this as well. So I don't want to take anything at face value. I've got a, I need to research this. And so that's why I supported Councilman Capriolio's continuance motion. And so I would like to, uh, if, if the charges are as bad as what I'm hearing at council, I could be impacted by that, uh, but I have to prove that for myself. And so I'll be supporting a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brando. City Attorney?
Yes, there is another option. The council could actually do both today if it chose. They could reject as to one or two of these banks and continue as to the rest if you chose to do so.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Brettafield, did you have another?
Well, yeah, that, that's in fact my motion, is that we reject these, these two banks. And I have all the information right here, um, and bring back with other, bring other options back to this council. There are many banks, there are many local banks, uh, who would do a fine job for the City of Fresno. That is up to our staff to review. These banks, it frankly is, is well-known about, uh, some of these practices. So I think we should vote on it right now, and that, that would be my, my inclination to do that.
Great.
May I, may I chime in again? And, and, and I appreciate the motion on the floor and the second to continue. And I would just ask again that we do have time to talk with staff, because I want to make sure that local banks, if we do consider anyone else, has the capacity to provide the services that we need.
I can answer that right now. They don't. They don't have the capacity to do that. That's why they didn't bid on it, because they don't have the capacity to handle it. And as mentioned in the staff report, the other banks don't offer certain services that we utilize right now, so we would be putting ourselves behind if we went with some other bank. So that's the, really the option that's out there.
Let me ask you. So are you saying Bank of America and Wells Fargo are the only banks that the City of Fresno can do business with to meet the City of Fresno's needs? There's no other bank in this entire country that can do business?
Based on the bids that, that were sent in and the process that we utilize, which is the process that's utilized for all contracts such as this, the committee determined that these two banks were the only ones that could provide the services that we currently utilize. Yes.
There's no other banks. Is it Bank of America or Wells Fargo?
Right now, yes.
When you say right now, what does right now mean?
Well, maybe in a few years, some of the others may develop those. But at, right now, these banks do not offer those services that we utilize.
Thank you. So we do have a motion to continue, right? Is that, so that supersedes the initial motion?
Yes, the pending motion is a straight-up motion to continue.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion to continue and a second, um, on that motion, and there is another competing motion that we will, I guess, vote, get to vote to if the motion to continue doesn't pass. Just kind of, just personally, I haven't really chimed in, but, you know, I, I, um, take to heart the discussion that is happening about, um, Bank of America and Wells Fargo and, um, banking institutions that have intentionally done some very bad things to communities of color. And I think that, um, as a bit over-billion-dollar organization, we should not take that lightly. We owe it to the taxpayers that, um, put in the money for all of us to do the work that, um, they feel we should be doing. And so I think that we should be taking a vote today to reject, um, and send a message. I think that they need to know loud and clear that this organization is not gonna agree with what they've done, and that we, as an organization, need to be creative and think outside the box. If it is, it is, even if I give you additional time, City Manager, with all due respect, it's not gonna change how I feel about what they've done. And we have to, rather than, you know, say, well, let's go think about it, let, we already know that the, these organizations, what these organizations have done, so let's look outside the box and figure out, maybe it's doing an additional search. And one, I will say, first, I do want to also thank you guys for, for doing this competitive bid, because I know that I talked about it about a year ago, and this was something that was important. So we see that when you have competition, we can get some savings, and so that's great. I, I applaud you guys for those efforts, because we had not done that. But I also am, you know, concerned about this. And two, to the point that Councilmember Baines mentioned, we also need to be considering, what are these financial institutions doing here in our community when we're looking at banking with them? I think that that's an important factor that, um, should be included as part of our criteria.
It was.
And so I just, in, in kind of the work that I've seen with Bank of America, and I've banked with them, uh, they do very little community investment that I know of. And so in, in my, from my perception, um, and so I'd like to really, when, when we do come back, or if we get new proposals, that that is highlighted, because I didn't see that really highlighted. Like, how many millions of dollars are they really investing in? Where are they investing it in? Are they investing it in communities that really need it, right? Versus just on, I don't know, other, other issues? So I'd like to, to see that if, if there's an opportunity to come back. But those are my comments. So today, I'm not, I'm prepared to vote to reject the, the staff recommendation. I think that we should, we need to send a message unless we're gonna say, uh, we're gonna consider it, you know, two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, when, when we come back. I just don't think that this council should, um, should, um, be delaying it, but taking a, a vote today. I do have a couple other council members. Go ahead.
Uh, there is a representative from Bank of America here, if you would like to ask questions about the community involvement. I, I believe he would be able to respond to those.
We'll go first to...
Do you want to do that to him?
Yeah, Oliver, yeah. So I was thinking, he wasn't prepared for that one today.
We'll go, um, first with my other colleagues, and then we'll see. I'm still, just on principle, I would not be supporting them. Um, Councilmember Olivier.
Okay, um, I am in, uh, complete sympathy with, um, with some of you, my council colleagues, and I do appreciate your passion. I do appreciate, uh, you bringing this forward. But I, um, I hear, what I'm hearing is have done, have done, have done. There have been times in the past where people, um, and organizations are called out for their recklessness, for their errors, uh, for, for their evil, uh, and they re-educate, and they come back, and they pay their fines, and they do their penance, and they learn from the experience and, and move forward in whatever it is. I've seen it with, uh, elected officials. I've seen it with corporations. I've seen it with nonprofits. I've seen it with people who have, uh, gone the wrong way. And I'm, look, I'm not sitting here advocating for mega-banks. My, my personal feelings on, on, on the banking practices of this country, um, you know, I, I'm, I happen to be a Wells Fargo customer, but, I mean, my bank is, it's, it's, it's a tool that I use to, uh, to get through the month. I'm not a fan of, of big banks and big banking, but I realize that, that the, the city has to, to do something. The, the only thing that, you know, we, we have a mission to accomplish, and, and in this case, we need the services of, of a mega-bank. I think what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say, and I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm just kind of throwing it out for council colleagues to ruminate on and, and maybe take the discussion in a different angle. I understand that the, that city staff is trying to do something here. I understand that there's a lot of passion and feeling here, but what I've heard is, they've done, they've done, they've done, they've done. They've done that. I mean, Ford Motor Company was making money in apartheid South Africa, but I don't see people boycotting Ford because of the mistakes that they made. They learned from it. They paid their, uh, they did their penance. They re-educated, and they, they moved on. And, and I appreciate people who, who, who turn away from the wrong and repent and, and, and come forward in a, in a new way. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I've heard, uh, from, from this dais, they've done, they've done, they've done. Since then, and since this, uh, Member Brettafield, you brought forward that they'd been fined, they paid the fine. Have these organizations, and, and maybe this is why we put it off, have these organizations changed their ways? Have they, um, committed to investing in, uh, certain communities, uh, Council President? Have they paid their fine, uh, Councilmember Brettafield? Have they moved forward, uh, in such a way that, that warrants continued business? If this were a fragrantly, uh, excuse me, flagrantly, um, racist organization, absolutely. Let's punish them for, for not, uh, getting with the times and, and, and doing the right thing. Absolutely. Let's not do business with racist and bigoted and prejudiced organizations. That's fine. But if these organizations have turned from the bad and turned toward the good and paid their fines and are now doing outreach, and are now doing investment, and are now, uh, trying to right their wrong, I don't see why we have to, um, pull the plug on this at this point. And so I think that more research is probably needed so that we can come back and make a good decision. If, if these companies are, are racist and bigoted and prejudiced and, and wrong, absolutely. Let's pull the plug on them and find a different solution. But if, since this has happened, uh, they have made overtures to communities of color and investments, and are trying to do the right thing and paying their fines and being culturally sensitive, absolutely, I think that, that we should have a discussion about possibly moving forward. So the, I, that's what I'm saying. Instead of, instead of condemning, uh, them and, um, um, just dismissing, uh, this piece of business out of hand, why don't we take this time to research to find out if they've rehabilitated? If they've made no gesture towards rehabilitation, that's the end of them. But if they're truly committed, uh, to, um, harmony and friendship and, and compassion between all peoples, then, then we can move forward. Just throwing that out. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Council Olivier. Now I have Councilmember Chavez and then Councilmember Capriolio.
Michael, got a quick, quick question, um, on this. So you spoke earlier, this is a question with regards to what Councilman Brettafield asked about the capacity for these large institutions to provide a specific service. What exactly do they provide that a local bank does not?
Well, there's a, several things. First off, um, we use, uh, you probably are aware, employees here generally get paid with direct deposit. But there are some employees that don't have bank accounts, believe it or not. Usually the temp employees with the summer jobs, say lifeguards and such, they get paid with a debit card. It's called a pay card. These banks provide that. The other ones and local banks do not provide those pay cards. We would have to get a second vendor in order to provide that, in order to provide people their, their pay every two weeks, if they don't have a bank account.
We don't issue checks anymore?
No, rare, rarely. We do issue some, but rarely. Most times we issue a pay card to these.
How many of those would you say there are in the city?
Not very many, a couple, about 100 or so. Not very many. But it's enough that we do have, we have to take that into consideration. And the fact is, these two banks do offer that service, and the others who propose, and I would venture to say, the local banks do not offer that kind of service.
So no debit, no debit cards are provided?
That's right.
What else can a local bank provide?
So there's, there's another service called, uh, uh, Paymode, which, let's say, let's say you bank with Chase, and you don't want to use the City of Fresno's website to pay your utility bill. You, you, I only want to remember one password, and it's my Chase password. So you go into the Chase site and you pay your bill through Chase. And I'm sitting here and I bank with, um, Bank of the West. And I don't, I'm, I don't want to remember a pa- second password, so I just pay through Bank of the West. All those different payments from all those different banks, they all come in different formats. So what happens is that there's a service called Paymode that consolidates them. And when we get them, we get it in one deposit. Otherwise, our staff has to go through and sort out who's, where's it coming from, who's it going to, and what format it is coming in. Takes, adds a lot more staff time to process those utility payments if we don't have that service. These two banks offer that. The others do not. So there are others. I could go on for a little bit longer, but I think it gives you the idea of the kind of, uh, technology and the scope that is provided by these other banks.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. Uh, I listened to the Councilmember Olivier's comments, and I, those are fantastic. You summed it up pretty well for what I was thinking in this situation. And, you know, we've had local situations here i- in our city, in our chambers, where we've had issues that have gone sideways, if you will, and along the similar line. And we've, we've had opportunity to rehabilitate and to get back on track with, with things. And, and I'd like to know if B of A, uh, we, I understand the issue completely, and Wells Fargo, but have they done something to rehabilitate themselves? Have they got the message? Is there more message that needs to be delivered? And I, I think if we delay this, we could, we could, uh, seek that information out and add that to the equation. It may or may not impact people, but we should at least have that benefit, or at least let them know that that's what we're looking at. We want you to change your ways. We want you to make life better for everybody in the City of Fresno and the country, for that matter. So I think with that in mind, and if they're on that right track, it'd be worth, uh, discovering and finding out and listening to, and maybe fold it into, uh, our discussions here. So, uh, that's the, really the reason I wanted to continue, to see how much, uh, rehabilitation, for lack of a better word, that they've engaged in, and hopefully it's a great deal. We all need to be that way. Thank you.
Next, I have Councilmember Brettafield and Councilmember Baines.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make one final point. Uh, good points from Councilman Olivier. However, I did read, uh, that Bank of America did not, did not accept the responsibility and liability. Like big corporations, they often don't, but they paid the fine, uh, wanted to go away. So I don't see that as truly accepting the responsibility and accountability, uh, for what, uh, has taken place. And this has been over several years. This is not a one-time incident. These things have been going on, similar with, uh, these other banks. And with all due respect, uh, Mike, I, I, I just don't believe there aren't other banks that could do some of the work that we're doing. I know, you know, uh, Wells Fargo, they're large, and Bank of America, they're large. But I think, uh, with some ingenuity and, uh, some creativity, we'd be able to get our services and financial needs met. So anyway, that, that's all I wanted to add.
Councilmember Baines.
Yeah, thanks. Um, a couple, a couple things I wanted to, to point out. Great discussion, and, um, probably, uh, a worthy one. And Mike, you mentioned, uh, unfortunately, that a representative from Bank of America is here. Can, who is that person? Yeah, if you don't mind, sure. I mean, we, we've talked a lot about B of A. And, and I promise to be, be gentle. I'm really a nice guy.
Yeah, no, good morning. My name's Jonathan Millard here, representing Bank of America. Um, my role at Bank of America, I'm the market leader for our public sector banking practice, so responsible for our government practice here in California, as well as Oregon and Hawaii.
Thanks so much, thanks so much for being here. I'll just cut to the chase.
Yes.
You've listened, obviously, intently to this discussion, I'm sure. Um, and a lot's been made about, uh, Bank of America accepting responsibility for these, uh, uh, practices of discrimination over multi-year period. What, what, what say you regarding that?
Yeah, uh, fair question. Um, so when I was sitting there and I heard, uh, the council member mention this lawsuit, it was actually the first time I had heard of it. So, um, I'm not prepared necessarily to speak specifically on that, uh, judgment of $2.2 million. I will say that as a firm, we do believe in diversity, and I know a lot of firms say they believe in it, but it really is practicing what you preach. Um, but from our... But from our perspective, our chairman, our new chairman, within the last couple of years, focuses on diversity. Our leadership and our staffing is predominantly split 50-50 between men and women.
I'm sorry, I want to really kind of keep the focus narrow. So essentially, Bank of America is not accepting responsibility publicly?
I, I, I'm not aware of this lawsuit, so I can't speak to it at this point. I certainly could come back and provide additional details.
And were you aware of the allegations, though?
Well, there are allegations made every day about different things. We have 200,000 associates.
This specific one?
I was not, no.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Would you also like me to talk about our community involvement? I know that came up a lot.
I don't.
Okay.
But somebody may want to call you up for that.
Wasn't our proposal if you'd like us to provide additional details.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, and listen, I didn't want to belabor the issue because a lot's been made about them saying they were sorry and coming, being honest and what have you, taking their medicine. And listen, I don't hear that being the case. So for you council members that, wanted to give them another chance, I mean, the gentleman that they sent here, who was their market rep for a couple of states, wasn't even aware of the issue. What that tells me is, more than likely corporately, they have not discussed it. And, you know, I kind of reject the idea that, that we're going to allow them to see, see what they've done and become good actors. They haven't even talked to their company about it. This gentleman sadly, and it's not his fault at all, he didn't even know about the lawsuit or the allegations. And so I find it hard for us as a body up here to defend that. When, you know, when someone, if they really, I think, had taken an active role and responsibility and want to do something, change their course of action, quote unquote, then what this gentleman would have said would have been dramatically different. And also, I think it should not be lost that, you know, this was a practice that, you know, allegedly occurred over several years. This wasn't like, oh, you know, you know, one month out of a year, we discriminated against some black folks and then, sorry about that, we won't do it anymore. This is a, this was an institutionalized practice that only came to light because of a lawsuit. It isn't like they caught it themselves internally and said that they were going to stop the bad behavior. This is something that was going on for a long time. So again, Councilmember Olivier and Capriolo, good points, but, you know, sadly, they don't hold merit today. You know, maybe, maybe the different course of action, you could have been right, but sadly, that's not a meritorious argument. I wish it were, though. I wish they had done that, but they have not. So with that being said, I also wanted to clarify Councilmember Brettafeld's initial motion. If I understand your motion, correct Councilmember Brettafeld, it is a continuance built in there. You actually just want to ensure that Bank of America and Wells Fargo are not considered in the further consideration. And I actually think that that is the appropriate motion, given, given the context. And so that's why I'm supporting it. So while Councilmember Capriolo's motion is a broad continuance, I think the motion that you have crafted actually sends the message that I'm prepared to send. It is a continuance, but we are rejecting those banks that are bad actors. Mike, I hear you're impassioned plea and I'm sorry about that because I totally get you. I read the staff report. I know that JP Morgan Chase came close, they may, they may be able to do some of the things that, because they are a larger bank, that Wells Fargo or Bank of America could do. But, you know, in my estimation right now, this is, this issue is an important issue and we should be on the right side of history on these types of things. And this bank needs, probably needs to be sent a message, at least from this little bitty body right here. So with that, I'll be supporting Councilmember Brettafeld's motion.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. And I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Brettafeld for bringing this to our attention. I also wanted to just say to any folks who are watching, you know, we, we have some antics up here on the city council and we have. But I, I'm hoping that, that this discussion this morning reveals what a thoughtful and really compassionate, caring group of individuals that I'm able to be on this council with. So I think that, I think that it's important to do the right thing in this case and I think that I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have a competing motion, which was a motion to continue in general. And there was a motion and a second. So we'll go ahead and take, we're doing Councilmember Capriolo's motion first, which is the motion to continue as a whole.
And let me just clarify that. Because Councilmember Brettafeld's motion is also a continuance, how do you decide which one goes first?
Well, Councilmember Brettafeld's motion was also substantive. It was to reject the bids and continue.
Okay.
So the purely procedural motion would go first. That procedural motion could be modified, but that one would have to be heard first.
I get it.
Great, so we will be taking the vote on the procedural motion first and then if that motion fails, we will take a vote on the second motion.
So the one from Councilmember Capriolo to delay this is the one we're voting on?
First, yes.
You know, in light of the dialogue here, perhaps I'll withdraw the motion to continue.
Perfect. So we have withdrawn the second motion, so we'll go back to the original motion, which was to reject the staff proposal and also include Wells Fargo as part of that and come back with a new proposal to the council. So we have a motion and a second. You were the second, Councilmember Beans, you were the second. We can take an electronic vote if folks wish to. Can we do an electronic vote?
So this is on Councilman Brettafeld's original vote?
Motion, original motion.
Can I, can I ask?
Go ahead. Councilmember Brando.
I got a little confused as to, confused to you withdrawing your motion that I seconded, Councilman Capriolo. So Councilman Olivier, you just made some comments right before we began taking the motion seriously. And could you repeat that? What were you actually saying?
I no longer support a continuance.
Oh, you don't support a general continuance? You want to vote on item today?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right then, so you've withdrawn your?
Yeah, he withdrew the motion, so we, we are back to the motion made by Councilmember Brettafeld. And we're going to be taking an electronic vote.
May I, may I just jump in one second? I'm sorry. I just learned that our current contract with Bank of America expires at the end of this month. So what extension opportunities do we have to get us by the next couple of months until we figure out what we're doing?
We're checking to see whether there's a month-to-month extension process in the contract.
So we have that information. Is there anything else you want to add, city manager?
City attorney. Is it possible for council to authorize us to extend that contract now during this period while we're figuring out next steps?
Yes, with Bank of America's agreement, yes.
Yes, I would, Mr. Lima, how long before you could come back with other options for us? And within mind, I would like it expeditious.
Well, this, this process started in August and we're here today. That gives you an idea how long it's going to take.
So you're telling, it's going to come back, you're going to need six months to come back?
You bet.
Mm-hmm. Well.
And what we may be coming back with, and I apologize for interrupting, but we may, what we may be coming back with are multiple contracts, which will most likely cost more money than what is before you today. And so I would just ask that if anything, we extend the contract that is, the existing contract to give us ample time to make sure that we're packaging this together to provide the services that we need going forward.
Okay. I'm open to what the council, but if you need six months, I'd say let's extend the contract. Obviously, we have to have continued services, so we'll extend it for six months, giving you the time you need to come back with viable options for the council to consider, other banks than Bank of America and Wells Fargo. And that would be, would that be just an aside to my motion, part of my motion?
Council, could you give us 20 minutes to look at the existing contract and look at what more options would be and then revisit this before the end of the meeting?
Sure. I mean, so you're saying you want us to hold off on this vote?
Yes, for 20 minutes.
Okay.
Councilmember Brando.
Okay, this is starting to turn into what I originally feared with my very original comments, which is hearing about this today for the very first time makes it very difficult to move forward. There needs to be a lot of research done. And now it's even spilled over into the current contract that we're in, okay? So I don't mind the conversation and I thank Councilman Brettafeld for bringing the conversation to us, but this was the first time I heard about it today. And I, I want to make sure that the law of unintended consequences is not going to operate on us based on hearing about something on day one and then voting. Now, many times when we are in that position, and we've already done it earlier today, I think the best place for us to be would be to continue the item. I believe that staff has heard the concerns of many council members here today. I don't think they're going to run over the top of council and the concerns that many of you have expressed. But I am, I don't think the right thing to do today would be to take this vote and to lock everybody down and then to discover the law of unintended consequences is really damaging to our finances or any other aspect of our city.
Councilmember Brando, can I just add to your point, though? So I get it that you want to continue. However, we already know that, well, it may be that this body may not support already a contract, an extension or continuation of an agreement, a five-year agreement with Bank of America and Wells Fargo. So even if we continue it to next meeting, we will be on the, essentially in the same boat. So I think we either make a decision today. If we really are concerned about, if you're really concerned about banking and making sure that the City of Fresno has a bank, there are other proposals that are on the table. There's three other bids that can be considered.
And I appreciate that, Councilwoman. And I appreciate that, Council President. And trust me, I believe every single person has made great points today on both sides of the issue. But with the limited information that I have, I won't be able to vote on it today, yes or no. And so I just wanted to let my colleagues know that. I have very limited information. I like to fully, this is a very important vote, seems like. I personally need to fully vet all the information. That will take me more than even just the 20 minutes that the city attorney is requesting. So I won't be able to vote yes or no on that motion today. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and recess for 15 minutes and give the city attorney just an opportunity to bring us additional information before we take the final vote. So we'll come back at 11:24, or 25.
11:24.
11:25.
Council, we could do closed session now.
Excuse me. The members in the audience that are here for that 11 o'clock item, I'd rather tackle that.
Well, that item and then go to closed session.
Okay, perfect. So given that we do have some folks in the audience here, we will postpone this vote until we get that further information. So we will move on to item, what is it, the 11 a.m. special meeting item, right?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brando, are you going to do the presentation?
Yep, if you're ready, Council President. Thank you. All right. And Council President, first, I want to thank you personally for allowing this to come on the agenda at such a late notice and working with me to make that happen. Totally, totally cool of you. And next year, as Council President, I'll certainly return the favor to all of our council members that feel like they have to hear something last minute. It's great that we have a council president willing to work with us on that. I wanted to discuss an issue today and I have a resolution. And the issue, thank you, Council President, and the issue is an assembly bill being put forth by Assemblyman Joaquin Arambula. And it is called Assembly Bill AB 3218. And he, this has just been pushed forward initially, about two weeks ago would be my guess, somewhere around two weeks ago. And I just learned about it then, began studying about it. I have, I had some, immediately I had some very dramatic concerns. Now, some of those concerns have been allayed, but others are still very important to me. So I drafted a resolution and in my six years, it's really the first time I've ever done a resolution that looks quite like this one. It's a resolution that both supports and could support or it could oppose Assembly Bill 3218. So there's language in my resolution. It's such a short resolution, I'm going to read it so that my colleagues can hear it. Very short and it'd be probably shorter than me just rambling. So here goes. Whereas Assembly Bill 3218 seeks state money for funding ongoing operations and maintenance of recreational facilities along the San Joaquin River, and whereas Assembly Bill 3218 requires the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation to take all action, all necessary action to acquire lands and expand Millerton Lake State Recreation Area to include the San Joaquin River and approximately 5,900 acres adjacent to the river, and whereas there, and this is probably the important one for me, for discussion purposes, whereas there is the potential for unintended consequences of this proposed legislation and, quote, "taking all necessary actions may include exercising eminent domain of private property and may result in major impacts to local land authority and the jurisdiction of the San Joaquin River Conservancy and other local agencies. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Fresno as follows. The council supports AB 3218 if it provides only for the maintenance and operations of the San Joaquin River Parkway." Second point, the council opposes AB 3218 if it authorizes the state to use eminent domain and/or exercise regulatory land use authority over the San Joaquin River Parkway. So I'm going to try and make some bullet points and I know there's people in the audience that would like to address this as well. And also I would like to add really quickly that I've spoken with staff from Assemblyman Arambula's office, the very great conversation, and they have really helped me get a long way in alleviating some of my fears. Here's what I love about Assemblyman Arambula's bill, that he is seeking money for operations and maintenance along the river bottom. And that's something that has been desperately needed for decades. The San Joaquin River Conservancy, which I sit on, on your behalf, has the ability to purchase land and do capital projects, but very limited, meaning almost no ability to operate and maintain those projects. It's led to a lot of handcuffing of great projects. That's what I like about Assemblyman Arambula's bill. And if it was just that, I would be his biggest cheerleader. However, there is also language in the current draft and we've been passed out something and I don't know if that, that might be updated language. It would not surprise me. I know they've been working on that. However, there's other sentences in his bill which are really scary in some regard. And one of those is that it takes all necessary action to acquire lands and expel, expand Millerton Lake State Recreation Area. As sitting on the Conservancy, and we went through a very dramatic vote this last year, we have a place at the table. This body has a place at the table. The City of Fresno has a seat at the table. The County of Fresno, the County of Madera, the City of Madera, the elected representatives of our citizenry has a seat at the table. There's language in the bill that makes me nervous that that could be taken away and those powers be transferred, transferred to the State Parks and Recreation Department in Sacramento. I believe and am worried about if that were to happen, that we would no longer have a seat at the table, but we'd be outside knocking on the window, trying to get attention rather than being a part of the discussion. Along with, I'm very... Along with, I'm very, um, worried and, and I've been concerned about the power to eminent domain private property. It's my understanding of the 5,900 acres, about 2,000 of them are privately held. We have, um, outstanding citizens in the city of Fresno, uh, Cliff Tutellian's an example, Stan Spano's example, many others are, uh, own property that have been in, in contract for a long time. And we have to deal with them as real people. They've owned land for a long time and they have desires for that land and we have to enter into negotiations with them. And I believe that's fair process. That's what we've been doing, uh, for many years, is dealing with people who own land. Uh, the Conservancy does that. Most of the times the Conservancy is able to acquire the land that they want, not all the time, most of the times. Uh, I don't, I am very concerned that the powers of the Conservancy, which really means local control, would be shifted to Sacramento. So I've had eminent domain concerns and, and where the end power will reside once Assemblyman Arambula's bill has been concluded. Now, this is going to go to a subcommittee, they could modify it. I feel it's important to send that subcommittee and all parties involved, interested parties, they should know that we could either both support this bill in its purest, simplest, best form, but if it transfers power, I, I believe that my recommendation is that we would oppose this bill. So my resolution contains option, opportunities of support and opposition. It's not a resolution of opposition, it's a resolution stating that if it's about money to, um, for operations and maintenance, we're very supportive. And I've, uh, sent the message to Assemblyman Joaquin Arambula's office. If that's what it is, I will lock arms with him and be very supportive, okay? But if it moves the other direction, moves local land use issues away from local control, I'm gonna be very opposed. And so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt my resolution today.
So there's a motion and a second. So we're gonna go ahead and go out to the public, but I want to first, um, recognize Anna Melendez from Assemblymember Arambula's office, and she can come. Um, I know that we've been in conversation about the bill over the last, um, 24 hours and, um, she can provide some context and then just updates. Um, I know that we get concerned about legislative proposals and I, as I spoke to you, um, Council Member Brando, when you asked me to put this on the agenda, I also noted, because I'm familiar with the legislative process in Sacramento, that it was a mere introduction and that they were trying to get legislative language to amend a certain section of the proposal. And it, the process is pretty lengthy, so there's various committees. So it is great that this body can take some action to, you know, state our position, but I think that it's fair to listen to, um, what, um, Dr. Arambula's office has, um, an update for us and just to provide some context about what they're doing.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to present and maybe clarify a little bit about.
And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, so, uh, name is Anna Havel Melendez and address is 2162 East Cromwell, Fresno, 93720. And today I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Joaquin Arambula. And I do have a statement to read on his behalf. Um, he is in Sacramento this morning as the assembly is in session. Uh, so this is again, the statement of Assemblymember Joaquin Arambula on AB 3218. It is no secret the San Joaquin Valley is severely underserved and often forgotten about. Compared to the rest of the state, we lack in the number of parks available for our community to use, and as a physician, I know the importance of spending time outdoors. Millerton Lake is the only state recreational area in Fresno, Madera, Tulare and Kings Counties. We are lucky enough to have the San Joaquin River right in our backyard, which could provide many opportunities for outdoor recreational activities. The idea to make the San Joaquin River a state park is not new. In 2009, a report issued by this California State Parks Department called for partnering with the San Joaquin River Conservancy to establish a new park with campsites, picnic sites, boating facilities and interpretive services. AB 3218 is an attempt to make this a reality. The intent behind the bill is to identify a source and agency that can provide operation and maintenance for the San Joaquin River Parkway. For 26 years, the San Joaquin River Conservancy has tried to achieve the goal of a continuous river parkway, but has been unable to provide enough O and M to allow the public to fully appreciate its recreational opportunities. Although I don't believe eminent domain is possible under AB 3218 and have been advised by legislative council that nothing in this bill gives eminent domain authority, I am working with legislative council on clarifying amendments that will clarify that the state would designate authority to state parks over the current existing property already within the Parkway Conservancy's portfolio. And that the purchase of new land for the purpose of one continuous river parkway would be written into the parks plan and fall under the existing authority of the Conservancy. The goal of this bill is to help with the mission to one day have a continuous river parkway that has sufficient operations and maintenance funding. As always, I look for solutions wherever possible and I believe that the key to securing O and M is through the State Parks Department. AB 3218 is an opportunity for the state to help address the long-term challenges of ongoing operation and maintenance of the San Joaquin River and help us increase park space in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member Brando, did you have some questions you want to?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Anna, thank you and thank you for the conversation yesterday. You've really helped me and I appreciate that you're saying today that eminent domain is not a part of what you're trying, of what, uh, Assemblyman Arambula's trying to accomplish here. And you've been working on modifying language, we talked about that a little bit yesterday. Has it, has it been modified at this point or is it still being worked on or?
Correct. So we, um, have been working with legislative council to amend the original, uh, bill language that was introduced. We have gotten some amendments, uh, as of this morning, but are continuing to work on the language of the bill itself to allay whatever concerns, uh, the city and the local authorities may have.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna clarify the part about eminent domain and that, that would be very appreciated if, if the final language clarifies that for those of us that are a little worried about the initial language. And, um, so I do appreciate it, I appreciate, um, our conversation yesterday. Um, Council President, we've also got a couple of members of the Board of Supervisors. Uh, they faced this same conversation on Tuesday and I'd like for them to be able to.
Yes, I have them on the list, they're next on the list. So if we need you for additional questions or comments, we will, um, I will call you up, Anna, thank you.
Thank you.
So next I have Supervisor Nathan Magzig. Welcome and nice to see you here.
Likewise, thank you, Council President and Council Members. So on Tuesday of this week, the Board of Supervisors also took a look at this particular bill and, uh, we had some observations and unanimously voted to send a letter to, uh, the Assemblymember. And in this case, looking at the bill, I do recognize as a former staffer myself, uh, working in Sacramento, that bills, uh, when they're first introduced, um, many times, most of the ti- uh, time, continue to change until, uh, it's time for them to go for floor votes. And so, uh, for us at the Board of Supervisors, some concerns that we had initially with this bill as it was introduced is it was the first that we had heard about it. So, um, you know, typically, we like to work with our, our legislators in creating legislation, but what the Assemblymember is attempting to do with trying to find operations and maintenance, uh, funding to maintain the park, I think is commendable. Uh, some concerns that, that we noted in the letter that we sent to Sacramento is we want to make sure that local control is not taken away in regards to the, to the Parkway itself. Looking at Lost Lake Park, Lost Lake Park is in my district, it's a couple hundred acres, it's right, um, it's right below Millerton Dam, right along the river. And looking at the language of the bill, it's unclear if Lost Lake Park may be swept into some type of state park system and the county then would, uh, lose its opportunity to maintain that park. And we have just got done, uh, spending about a five-year period of time revitalizing 84 acres of that park. So there's a lot of questions that we have, but mainly making sure that local control is, uh, is, is maintained is critical. So we sent a letter and I think that letter's been provided, um, to the, the city of Fresno as well. And I think it's important for all of us to speak with one voice as a county, as the city of Fresno and the county of Madera, just to make sure that as this bill works its way through the process and gets assigned to different committees, that, uh, the bill is retooled in such a way that it's workable for all of us. So at the end of the day, the County Board of Supervisors did not take a specific opposed position to the bill, but we did state what our concerns wa- uh, were. And to the extent that this bill can be retooled, maintains that local control, you know, we're fully supportive and appreciate all the efforts of the Assemblymember, uh, Joaquin Arambula. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Andrea Borges. Nice to see you as well.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues from the city. Uh, Andreas Borges, Fresno County, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think most everything that needs to be said has been said. Uh, let me, uh, point out a few nuances, uh, to support what Supervisor Magzig mentioned and earlier, uh, Councilmember Brando. Intent only go so far. And I think we are all very supportive of Dr. Arambula's intent to, to get, uh, O and M funding. As the, uh, former chairman of the Conservancy for two years, this has been the Achilles heel, if you will, of, uh, the Conservancy. So much so that it has become, uh, a discussion point with, uh, the city leadership about trying to find money for O and M, also with the county, and even discussions about a ballot issue that may be on November's, uh, ballot for O and M. We still don't know about that yet. But, so that is top of mind. But I think what I want to impress upon you, if, if you don't know already, is the idea that if we have these concerns, that they be articulated and incorporated into the legislation itself. That is why I think the board took its action. We certainly do not want to have, uh, the powers of eminent domain, uh, bless you, on the table. But it's beyond eminent domain. It's also the sanctity and sovereignty of local control, the city, the county, and in particular the Conservancy. So if we, if the intention is only O and M and land use authority is intended to remain with the local authorities, the Conservancy, the city and the county, then let's write that into the bill, making very certain that we are not divesting, uh, our local control in favor of the state. If that is the case, I would certainly support this, this effort. And I would join with, uh, Member Brando and maybe even President Soria, uh, and members of the board in supporting the bill itself. But we all know, the Sacramento legislative process can start, uh, in one fashion, in character, modify and even Frankenstein along the way. That is my biggest concern. So if we're truly serious about crafting the best legislation, then it will have provisions in there, not only to eliminate the threat of eminent domain, but clear articulation that the city of Fresno and other related entities maintain their land use authority. So in essence, the state of California would be graciously providing O and M funding, but that is it. Uh, that would be, uh, the ideal situation and because no one can answer that question, that is why I think all of the antennae are up. So as you move forward in, in deliberating this, uh, resolution, I appreciate, uh, the time that you've taken. And just so we're clear, we are both, we are supportive, but with concerns. And if those concerns are addressed, we can all lock arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Bren?
Good morning, everyone. Hi, my name is Bren Forehand. Um, I happen to be the citizen representative for the city of Fresno on the San Joaquin River Conservancy. I am not here representing the Conservancy, I'm here representing me and the reason why is in an earlier life, um, other than having served on the San Joaquin River Conservancy for the past 15, 16 years in that capacity, and I appreciate that because many of you have supported my involvement on that. In a previous life, and I even hate to say 25 years ago, I was a legislative staffer and I was involved in the process in terms of getting the Conservancy Act worked on. And so my colleague, Councilmember Brando, I certainly can appreciate what your concerns are. I went through this process, having then worked for Assemblyman Jim Costa, the 25, 26 years ago, when this was all begun with the Conservancy. And I can truly tell you, having sat at the table, having been involved, the issue of local control and eminent domain was absolutely important in that deliberation. And as you know, that is the result that we have today. And so I want to hold out to you that that deliberative process, that collaboration that was convened at that time with all interested parties, the city of Fresno, the county of Fresno, and the county of Madera, and also the Parkway Trust and other groups and private landowners as well, we all came together for that Conservancy Act. And so I just want to echo the comments made by the members of the Board of Supervisors, both Supervisor Magzig and Borges, in that we need to weigh in on this, discuss it, but I really want us to take a step back and not pull the, pull the pin out of the grenade to oppose it outright. I think that Councilmember President, um, Soria pointed out, this is a process, it's just the beginning, it's a spot bill, we're hearing from Arambula's, uh, staff, the changes are coming. I would suggest there would be a convening of a group of all of the interested parties here from the various local agencies to hash these things out with the Assemblymember and his staff as we move forward, because we do not want to lose sight on the goal, which is so important here, is the funding for operations and maintenance for the Conservancy. Because we all know, public access to those properties and to that river is what's absolutely paramount in this situation. We have to keep that goal in mind and knowing full well that tens of millions of dollars of public monies have been spent to act, to acquire those properties, it is so dependent upon us as those involved in this process to do everything we can to find a funding stream, an O and M situation, to be able to fund that. So I just want to make sure we're, um, calm in this process, I hear you loud and clear, I think others hear you, but we need to be deliberating, uh, conversing, sharing information and then moving forward. And I really believe that, uh, you, Councilmember Brando, and the members of this body are interested in seeing that happen. And I believe the county of Fresno is mov- is, believes that as well, as well as the county of Madera. So let's not trip up ourselves at this point, let's keep focused on what the goal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will call up Denise, I know, um, she is representing Congressman Jim Costa and I, a few minutes ago, I passed a letter that we just received, um, from Congressman Jim Costa and as mentioned by Bren, he was one of the persons that, when he was in the assembly that worked on this issue as well.
Yes, um, like Council President said, my name is Denise and I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Congressman Costa. Today I write to you regarding a resolution before the city council concerning Assembly Bill 3218, legislation that seeks to address the longstanding challenge of funding ongoing operations and maintenance of the San Joaquin River Parkway. When the San Joaquin River Conservancy was created in 1992, I worked very closely over a period of seven years in a collaborative effort with the city of Fresno and the counties of Fresno and Madera to ensure that these local agencies would play a pivotal role in the creation of the Parkway, with portions on the Conservancy Board along with other local and state agencies. The purpose of the Conservancy was to promote the Parkway and coordinate efforts and mediate differences among the local jurisdictions and the state. I believe that Assemblymember Arambula intends for his legislation to be consistent with these long-established collaborative traditions. Parks, playgrounds, greenways, trails and community open spaces help keep Americans and their communities fit and healthy. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, only 25% of American adults achieve recommended results of daily physical activity, which contributes to increased obesity and obesity-related diseases like high blood pressure, diabetes, congestive heart failure and stroke. As one solution to the increased incidence of obesity, the CDC has called for more parks and playgrounds. Studies have shown that when people have open space to recreate in, they exercise more. The San Joaquin Valley has less park space than comparable regions of California and the lack of green space negatively impacts the opportunities for our friends and neighbors to recreate outdoors and in ways that contribute to the vitality of our communities. The most critical challenge facing the San Joaquin River Parkway is the ongoing operations and maintenance costs, which have an estimated to be between seven to six and seven million dollars annually. The Conservancy has had sufficient bond funding for the acquisition of properties to assemble the Parkway, but not the necessary funding to fulfill its responsibilities to operate and manage the Parkway. This is absolutely imperative in order to enable the public to access the Parkway. We have an obligation and therefore a challenge to provide an ongoing, long-term funding stream for the lands that have been acquired as part of the Conservancy and land that will be acquired from willing sellers. will be acquired from willing sellers. There are three concepts that have been discussed over the years to address this ongoing operations and maintenance challenge. Number one, form a joint powers authority between the city of Fresno and the counties of Madera and Fresno. Number two, create a special district with an assessment fee to raise the necessary O&M capital. And number three, expand the state park at Millerton and include the Parkway land and future lands acquired from the willing sellers. Given the demands already placed on local government from deferred maintenance of the existing park system to outstanding pension obligations, it seems clear the third option of pursuing an ongoing partnership with the state of California would be a critical element to achieving the Parkway's mission. As the author of the legislation that created the San Joaquin River Conservancy, I'm willing to sit down with Assemblymember Arambula, city officials, city councils, and local stakeholders to address this longstanding O&M challenge. I commend Assemblymember Arambula for introducing legislation to solve this problem and urge him to continue to work collaboratively with all parties to find a constructive solution. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments, and I look forward to continuing to work with you all. Sincerely, Jim Costa.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And just a couple notes of observation. I mentioned this to my colleague, Councilmember Brandow, and I may ask Anna to just, if you could come down, I want to make sure, and I shared this, that we aren't sending something that ultimately potentially could weaken our Assemblymember's role in this negotiation process. I do understand it's early in the legislative process, and I have an idea of how these things work, not nearly as much as you do, but does this action help the cause of what Councilmember Arambula is trying to do?
I think that we definitely understand the concerns of the local elected officials and local authorities, absolutely. And as I spoke with a couple of our elected officials yesterday and over the past couple of weeks, as well as with the original author, Jim Costa, about his original intent as well. I believe that we'd like to reiterate that this bill is continuing to change. We continue to make amendments to it, and we are still awaiting a hearing date for it to be assigned and heard in the committee, rather, the committee to which it is assigned, which is water, parks, and wildlife. This is an evolving process. Perhaps it would be best to just reiterate to you that this is evolving, right? So actions that are taken are taken perhaps with insufficient information. I would hesitate for actions to be taken without you being fully aware of the information and what we're currently trying to do. As I mentioned, we are currently working through amendments and amending the actual bill. When it is heard in Policy Committee, a lot of other questions will come up, and subsequently it'll also be assigned to appropriations where the fiscal impact of what will be needed will be heard as well.
Okay, so, forgive me, but does our action today help the Assemblymembers' efforts in negotiating the bill? Does this in any way help that effort?
The resolution, as I understand it, is a two-part resolution. I'm not sure that I would advise voting on a resolution today for fear that, because it's two parts, it will inadvertently send a message that we won't be able to clarify. I don't want to speak on behalf of the city, obviously, but I would just advise that because the bill continues to change and be amended, that perhaps not taking a vote on the resolution today, you might want to consider delaying the resolution vote itself.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Thank you. And so my only issue, Councilmember Brandow, is, you know, we have a relatively strong voice in the state Capitol, and I know Dr. Arambula is, he's doing a really good job getting a lot of things done for us here, and I would, part of that, I think, is, I think people in the state Capitol know that his community supports him and his efforts, and I'm a little unclear on if this would potentially hurt that and hurt his standing in the negotiating effort. And I think, I think that you've reiterated that he's, that things are evolving, and I listened to both Supervisors Magzig and Borges, as well as Anna, and even Bren Foran. It sounds like this process is ongoing. I would just hate for us to inadvertently do something that could hurt that. So I'm going to listen to my colleagues a little bit, but I don't want to take an action today that's going to hurt our Assemblymember in the state Capitol. I want to make sure that what we're doing here is aligned with what he's trying to get done, and I'm all for making sure that we reiterate our concerns to him. If that resolution said concerning, or supporting Assembly Bill 3218, I know you can't make that change today, I appreciate that. And I think my alarm, you know, came initially because the title says opposing Assembly Bill 3218, and I know you're going to clarify that on the record.
And I'd like to do that right now, if I could.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead. Because in, I believe that is on, when it got added to the agenda, the word opposing is in there. However, if you look at the document itself, the resolution itself, the very first case is support, and it uses the word support, and I've made that clear this morning, but sometimes in these very sticky situations, you have to go over the top to make it clear. So I consider this, as the bill is in flux, I think that's the perfect time for us to let our voice be made known, okay? Not after the case. I think it's very perfect for us to say to our colleagues in Sacramento that we can easily support this, and if through the different iterations that may come of this bill, it ends up being about operations and maintenance money, I consider this resolution to already be a resolution of support, if that's the pathway chosen. So Councilman Baines, I definitely want to make sure that anybody who read the part where it got added to today's agenda might see the word opposing. I have never once considered this a resolution opposing. This isn't about opposing, it's about communicating. And so I think now's the time to do that communicating.
And I can appreciate that, and you're right, there are strategic times of communication. I totally agree with that, and this definitely, as the bill is making its way through committee and eventually coming out, is the time to actually communicate that. I think the only thing that I wanted to make sure of, and make sure you heard my concern, was one, obviously the way it's titled, and I appreciate you clearing that up. The other thing is whether or not our communication is helpful in us ultimately getting what we want or not. And I know it's, I haven't got a clear answer on that yet exactly, but I'll listen to my colleagues, and I'll kind of wait to hear more dialogue.
Great, thank you. So next, I have Councilmember Chavez, and then Councilmember Caprero, and then Councilmember Olivier.
All right. So it's no secret that Central Valley always gets left behind out of the pot of funding up in Sacramento, and there's a very simple reason for that, because we are vastly outnumbered by legislators in Southern California and Northern California. I've been personally in those meetings, I know how that happens, and the last thing we want to do is shoot our legislator in the foot, because when they get something and they don't see support locally, it basically makes it easy for them to say no to the conversation about allocation. So I'm not going to go on, because I think everybody made some really good points, but I've got two options for Councilmember Brandow, if you're open to this, because I heard the concerns that you had, that our colleagues over at the county had. Would you be agreeable to changing the language so that it would read, "Supporting operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control"? Would you be agreeable to have that?
And that would be the title, is what you're suggesting?
Correct. Rather than opposing AB.
Talking about up at the very top of my resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Supporting?
Operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control.
While maintaining local control.
That's one option. The other option I was going to float is what our colleagues over at the county did, which was send a letter outlining the parts we support, the parts we have reservations or control, or we would like to see modified included into the language, signed by the council with regards to that.
Whoever wants to say.
Sure. So I think that hearing Councilman Chavez, and then earlier, Councilman Baines, you guys are a little concerned about that this might be branded as opposition only, and although I don't believe it is, and I don't believe the body of the resolution is very clear, that it can be supportive if one pathway is chosen or opposed, as long as that language is there.
Point of order, Member Brandow, point of order. If I may, Council President, at the League of California Cities on that board, we sometimes vote to support legislation going through Sacramento, we sometimes vote to say no to that legislation, sometimes we just vote to monitor or watch. Maybe that could be part of this as well. I mean, it's, maybe your item could be, just to maintain the text of the item, but the title of it could be to monitor, and just to let folks in Sacramento know that this body and this organization is very closely, and that's what we do at the League, maybe that could help resolve a little bit of the confusion between, do we condemn it, do we support it? Or maybe we could get a 7-0 to monitor this and send a message to people in Sacramento that our eyes are on them. And as it unfolds, there we go, we have a 7-0, we're speaking in a unified voice, and we're monitoring this piece of legislation. Thank you, Councilmember Brandow.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Councilman Olivier, so real quickly, I think that we're not just a monitoring body, I think that we need to, we're a body of voice, so I think we have to express our voice. I am, however, willing to revisit what Councilman Chavez asked me in the title of the resolution. So let's go back to that for a minute, Councilman. Supporting Assembly Bill 3218 if local control is maintained?
Supporting operation and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control.
While maintaining local control, and then if you need me to build that into the title, and then can I add to that, and denying eminent domain powers?
Sure.
Okay. Then I'm willing to make those changes to help you folks understand that that's really my intent anyway, so if that helps to put that in the title.
Perfect. So next, we have Councilmember Caprero.
Thank you, Council President. It seems to me that the Sacramento leaders don't have privy to this type of conversation and concerns that we have as a body for our citizenry in the city and the county of Fresno. And I don't know how to convey that to them in a tactful way. I can see them looking at this, or listening to this, or reading this, and easily taking a negative tone. I really think that. And rather than delay, or obstruct, or have some interference with Dr. Arambula's hard work, I think I really would support a letter similar to what the county wrote, so that would serve our purpose of conveying a message, and it would serve a purpose of us staying unified as a Central Valley community. So I think the letter thing would be an option that you might want to consider, Member Brandow. Just, that would kind of serve all the purposes. It would let them know we're monitoring, and let them know that we are ready to do a resolution if the push comes to shove, and we can say that resolution is our ace, if you will, for a later play if things don't turn out as our educated colleagues here who have been to Sacramento and have seen how the process works. It would be a way to take care of both ends of the concern and problem here.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Caprero. And, you know, I just want to add to your comments, I think that that is a great suggestion. I think that in the spirit of attempting to speak in a unifying voice and saying that this body does support the attempts by our Assemblymember, because I think that the intent is the O&M issue. And this body previously, and the body across the street in terms of the county and other folks that have been involved, have been talking about this issue for far too long. And what I want to do, I want to applaud my Assemblymember, I'm very proud that he represents me, because I applaud him in charging forward and continuing the hard work that Congressman Jim Costa started back when he was an Assemblymember. And if it's someone from the Central Valley that represents us at the state level that can get it done, I will say it's Dr. Arambula can get it done, because we know at the end of the day, in terms of the politics and the leverage that we have, and if we want to draw those dollars here to our community, I think that this body needs to say in a unified voice, yes, we support your efforts, and we can do it through a letter, and then once we get to a place where the bill is much more ripe, and it's going through, as we're monitoring, then we can come back with a resolution to state our final position. But I think that we can send that message through the letter. So I don't know if there's a motion, but I will make a motion.
What's your preference, Councilmember Brandow? What's your preference?
I think the Board of Supervisors might speak in letter form a lot more often than we do. We speak mostly in resolution form. So I had a conversation with a city attorney kind of about that, leading up to this, and we really express our, we express our support and opposition to different things through resolution form. So, I mean, that's normally, I think most of you, my colleagues, have done these type of things in the past, to let our voice be known. So I prefer just to speak in a resolution form, and I've made great changes, and I've addressed concerns, and so I think you guys can see where I'm really at on this, and I really believe, I absolutely believe what Council President just said. I also will applaud Joaquin, I applaud him just for getting involved in operations and maintenance money for this. And if it continues like that, I give you my word, you'll see me as his biggest cheerleader, as I was when he brought a million dollars to the Pavarillo house. I walked up to him and told him that was fantastic work, okay? And so, but my concerns are still in the current language that's in his current bill, okay? So I think we express ourselves through resolution form, and now I've changed even the title, so I would be, I don't believe this is a letter of opposition. I think it's, I don't believe it's a resolution of opposition, I believe it's a resolution expressing our voice, and so I want to, I would like to.
So just so we're clear, so then you're okay with changing the title to, "Supporting operating and maintenance funding of AB 3218 while maintaining local control"? You were okay, you were comfortable with that on the title?
Yes, yes, while maintaining local control.
And in striking eminent domain?
Yeah, denying the powers of eminent domain.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Olivier.
Okay, thank you. Steve, I don't, I want to support this, I wanted to support it when I came forward, but through this discussion, it's losing me. We've heard three or four times from the people in this room that it's going to change, and it's going to change, and it's going to change, we don't know the language. I was told through the rumor mill that the eminent domain was coming out, we just heard from staff that the eminent domain is not yet out. I believe the quote was, "Actions are taken without sufficient information in Sacramento." We don't have a hearing date, we don't know anything about this. And I think somebody, I think it was Supervisor Borges, that mentioned that things in Sacramento tend to change and then Frankenstein. I'm not going to vote to support something that doesn't have a hearing date that could Frankenstein. If they came and the statement from our Assemblymember said, "I reject eminent domain, and it won't be a part of this," I'd be willing to support it. But what we're here is, we're listening to an agenda item that wasn't brought forward by our Assemblyman's office. This was brought forward by the Councilman whose district will be affected, because he wasn't consulted ahead of time. And when we bring things forward at city, or county, or at the state, we do a rollout. We do a rollout where we consult with the right folks, right, to get the information that we need. We go to the key stakeholders in our community, we communicate with the people who need to be communicated with, so that way we have, the community knows what's coming forward. In this case, we have a piece of legislation that's coming forward without a hearing date, without language, and none of the locals were ever consulted. The rollout has been bungled, and I'm happy to call my Assemblymember, Dr. Arambula. And I'm happy to call my Assembly member, Dr. Ramula, out for, for a bad rollout, just like I would call Assemblymember Jim Patterson out, who's, who's from my party, for a bungled rollout. So I think it's too premature to, to take a position on, on a nebulous ether of legislation that has been bungled badly in its introduction to the community. And I think that I want to see a, a more solid piece of legislation. I want to see a piece of legislation that doesn't contain eminent domain before I'm going to take a position on this. And it's, it's, I mean, it's not because I don't think that the work that you have done is, is, is good. I appreciate what you've done. I, I've supported you from the beginning on this. But I mean, now it's changed, and now it's, it's, now it's a support, and we're putting stuff in, and we're taking stuff out. And now we're all pledging allegiance to our state lawmakers. I think that what we need to do is hold our state lawmakers accountable. So unfortunately, I won't be able to support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
And for the record, I think Councilmember Olivier had previously said that he would not be weighing in on state legislation, so.
I don't want to qualify that. I don't like to vote on things that, we, we cherry pick, you know, Bob Smith from Anaheim's legislation because we like it. I don't believe that it's worth the taxpayers' time to have a, have a debate on that. But this was brought forward by one of our council colleagues in an attempt to hold the state legislature accountable. So I think absolutely I should, I should, we should all weigh in on this. But I, I think that it's, it's important to cast more of a, a critical eye on this before moving forward and pledging our organization to supporting something that could be completely different once it gets out of, of committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you again. And Member Brandow, you really brought forward this at a very appropriate time, I think, and a very appropriate issue before the council today. And I think, I think, I think, anyway, I think we can, I think the message, we've had all the key players in the room, and I know they're listening to this, their staff is here, and I think they hear us loud and clear. I, I think this discussion and all the things we've put on the table, and I know you're going to, you'll be texting him in 10 minutes, if we can finish in 10 minutes. But I think the message has been delivered loud and clear, and I think we've made the point. And I thank my colleague for bringing all this forward and putting it on the table. So there's no, no question, no doubt, no question, no, no way you could understand how we feel about this. So I think you did your job. I think it's on the table. And I wanted to call Member Massic up if he would, Supervisor, excuse me. We're just members, you are a Supervisor. You know.
I am, I'm your humble servant, sir.
You are, we are, we share.
How may I serve you?
Yeah, we share territory, absolutely.
Listening, I just have some thoughts. So it is true that, yes, the Board of Supervisors issued a, a letter. And in the letter, we identified some things that we would like to see in the legislation. And hearing from Member Brandow, I recognize that the city speaks in resolution. So maybe a suggestion that I would have is a resolution which maybe wouldn't say if you're going to support or oppose the legislation, but a resolution which identifies the tenants that are most important to the city of Fresno. So lay out that in this bill, you want to see these things. And if those appear in the bill, then obviously a resolution, another resolution would follow from the city of Fresno supporting this particular bill. That way it's clear, and you're on the record in writing as a city, that these are the things that you want to see in the bill. I know with the letter that the county of Fresno issued, that was my individual goal, and all five board members side on, signed on to that particular letter. So if, if that's something that maybe would almost be like splitting the baby, so to speak, because we are at the front end of this process, at least the city of Fresno would go on record stating that you do want local control, eminent domain needs to be out of the, out of the bill, operation and maintenance are things that are very important. So that is just a suggestion. I think if this bill does morph into something that is going to be damaging to our, our community, at, at least as we see it, then I think we could have another discussion as a county and a city, and the county of Madera, about maybe doing a joint resolution at that point. Because I do believe we need to be clear in our messaging, and we are stronger when we speak with one voice. But we are at the front end of this, and I do take Assemblymember Joaquin Ramula at his word, and that this is something to help benefit all of us. And so with that, I would just maybe provide some suggested language to him in the form of a resolution, and ask that that be incorporated into the bill, and maybe that can help allay concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to be fair, Supervisor Borges, do you have a comment or two you'd like to add to the conversation?
I think just to be brief on it, Member Bagzig identified what we did at the county, which was to articulate that we had concerns about eminent domain, we had concerns about land use authority, about the maintenance of the sovereignty of the conservancy and not being subordinated to the state. Those are four of the issues that I care about most. And the idea that we, that we should wait until later in the process to let our voices be heard is how we get into trouble legislatively. It is better to have a, a more comprehensive, a more sustainable piece of legislation at the outset than to try to modify it halfway through, once it's passed committee. So I think, as you deliberate today on whether you do a resolution, I'm not necessarily advocating that you have to do a resolution or you have to do a letter. That's up for you to, to decide today. But we are all on the same page, almost intuitively. And I think we do need to hear from the city of Fresno on this issue, because we're going to bring it to the conservancy. And then we're going to go to the county of Madera as well, so that Sacramento respects the position of our regional authorities. For Fresno to not weigh in on what it wishes to have, I think would be problematic. And I think you have all the information that you need today to form an opinion that you're supportive, but conditioned on the following. If that answers your question, or.
It does, but I want to put you on the spot. So you, it seems to me that we do speak often in, in letters and resolutions and so forth. But for consistency's sake and, and unification of, of all of us, would a letter be your preference? The message, I think we all got the message. I like your four points, those are really good. So if it's in a letter form or a resolution, do you think either/or would be sufficient?
I, I think either one would be fine. The reason why I drafted that letter at the county is because we wanted to be very clear, just as President Soria and Member Baines had identified. We don't want to send the wrong message. And so I think the letter from the county was a nuanced way of putting out a more comprehensive message than bullet points by virtue of resolution. So it was more nuanced. But I think now that the table's been set, we just need to have more support put on that table for the more meaningful discussions with the Assemblyman's Office and the others that are relevant on, on the committee. So I'll leave that up to you, but I would, I would certainly encourage action today. Because it's easier to craft legislation at the outset than to modify it through the process.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So what, what I'm hearing is, are we sending a message, or are we sending a mandate? And I, I think at, at this point, a message would be better. And the subtle message, which is so subtle, is we're sort of mandating this. And I, I think the representative here has that loud and clear. With that in mind, I, I think it'd be better to be consistent and send a letter with those bullet points and the things you want as well, Member Brandow, rather than a resolution. So I would, I would support a message slash letter at this time.
Councilmember Baines. Did you want to add something? Council, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, and who was your second? Clint, you were his second. So you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Okay, so Councilmember Chavez makes that second, so.
I want to see the language first. I understand the point of, of Supervisor Borges, I understand.
The, the language is, the language is published.
...date, and I want to, I want to be, move further in this process before, at the.
It is, it is public. Okay, perfect. So we do have a motion and a second. So, perfect. No further comment?
You're still up? No, you're good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a vote. Is there any opposition to the amended motion, which was to take the recommendations made by Councilmember Chavez, correct? Perfect, so there is opposition? Any opposition?
Yeah.
One? One in opposition? So motion passes six, one. Thank you. Next, we will resume with the item that we had postponed on the recommendation made to continue banking with Bank of America. So, City Attorney, could you provide us an update with the information that you were able to gather?
Yes, the original contract was a five-year contract from 2010 to 2015. It has had a series of extensions since then, but those extensions expire at the end of this month. So an option of the council, but the original contract, and this term still applies, allows the council to terminate the contract without cause on seven days' notice. So the council could add to the existing motion to extend the contract for six months through September of this year and come back with other proposals.
And if I may. If I may, we learned a couple other things while we were on break that I'd like Mike to share with council. And in addition, after discussing with staff, I would really request if we do extend the existing agreement, that we do it for nine months, because we are going to have to figure out how to package this together, and we may need to issue a couple different RFQs, RFPs, et cetera. And so we may need more time than the six months that was originally discussed. And we'd appreciate that.
Councilmember Brettafield, are you amenable to that, or six months is?
I, I would prefer six months. I think that's really, if we're truly serious about doing this, we need to have our staff come back within six months. That was Mr. Lima's initial impression. I think Bank of America, Representative, would you, would you come forward, please? And I just have a quick question for him, and then I think we can move forward with this.
Thank you.
Are, I don't know if you can represent the B of A in this, but are you willing to accept a six-month extension?
So I would be supportive. I would need to get one other person to agree to it, and I can have a formal response back to the city by tomorrow end of day.
Okay. And I imagine if we needed three more months or six more months, you would be wanting to accept the city of Fresno's business?
Yes, of course. May I just add one comment?
Yes.
I'd like to say that oftentimes when transitions occur between banking services, there is the need for an overlap period because of the transmissions that occur between banks, you know, moving lock boxes, checking accounts, so.
Thank you.
Flexibility is probably important for you.
Thank you. So as part of the motion, I'd like to just extend the contract to September 30th, 2018, with the same terms. Also allow the contract to, the city to terminate without cause on seven days' notice. I think that the Bank of America will accept that. If we need more time, I think they'll accept that. And I would just ask that in the future, our staff bring back renewed contracts, not with 30 days before they expire, but perhaps four months in case something like this occurs where we want to terminate a contract, for whatever reason. That's part of the problem. We only have 30 days, and so now we're, we're rushing. So I would ask that staff give council more leeway in the future on any contract, because you obviously never know what the council's going to decide to do.
Perfect. So your motion is to, can you state your motion again?
Yeah. As we said earlier, reject the staff recommendation of Bank of America and Wells Fargo, come back within six months or sooner, with other alternatives for the council to consider in terms of a new bank, and that we would extend the contract with B of A for six months with the same terms that we have currently.
Perfect.
That's it.
Councilmember Baines, you were the second. Are you agreeable to that amendment?
Yeah, but I do want to allow the city manager a moment to just weigh in on, on that. But, but yeah, I'm the second.
Again, I would just say, and I'm going to defer to Mike as well, but after, and I know Mike said six months earlier, but after talking with him and knowing that one bank most likely will not be able to, to provide all of the services that we listed in this RFP, especially based on the conversation earlier, we may need to package this up in different proposals and get different responders, and then come back with multiple contracts, which again will most likely cost more than the item before you today. And also, I want to, I want Mike to point out some additional information that he learned about the, the other banks that proposed, because I want to make sure that, I mean, we've shared a lot today, and that he shares what he found out as well. So Mike, do you mind?
But, but before we get into that, I want to, I want to, I want to button up the, the six or nine-month thing with Councilmember Brettafield. Because I'm okay with, with giving them nine months, because they probably are going to have to package this a little bit differently. And we may see a series of, I, I would assume we would see a series of contracts over the next nine months to finish it out. But I think it accomplishes the goal. So I want to be, I want to be agreeable to that if you are.
Yeah, I can go with that. Are you comfortable at all with saying a six-month with a renewal for three? Or you want to just leave it at nine? I'm open to whatever.
Yeah, I'm okay with giving staff the time we need. They, they, I know, I know today they were blindsided in a way, and so we want to give them, we want to give them what they need in order to get that. So I'm willing to take the recommendation.
Perfect. So we do have a motion and then a second. And I do want to just echo what Councilmember Brettafield said in terms of, you know, trying to come to counsel. Because I know we've had one other situation where I feel that we are put in a pickle because the contract has pretty much expired, and then it makes us feel like we have no other choice. And I think that that's very unfair. So I'd hope that in the future, as you guys are working through, through these renewals, that you guys are taking that into consideration. I think that for us, it makes it a lot better, rather than feeling like we're stuck. So I, I would appreciate that. So there is a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the motion?
Hello.
Oh, are, are you going to add any, well, are you going to add anything in terms of the, the?
Oh, I'm going to provide information.
Information about the, about the debate in order to?
I hope to, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So Councilmember Brettafield, with all due respect, you were a little vague on your, what, which one you were citing, which case. I think you're referring to a $2.2 million settlement that B of A made in 2013. That was for racially discriminating, racially discriminatory hiring practices from 1995.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, so as was mentioned, the management of that company's changed dramatically since then. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, thank you.
I also wanted to point out that every institution that responded to our RFP has been sued and has had to make payments for one form of discrimination or another. Chase in January 2017 paid $55 million for discriminatory practices in mortgage lending. Union Bank in April of 2013 paid $2.5 million for an age discrimination case. Just last year, almost a year ago today, in fact, here in Fresno, a jury here in Fresno awarded a former employee of the Bank of the West $1.68 million for age discrimination by a branch manager. I bring these cases up only to say, not to say the discrimination is okay. It is not, and it should be challenged. But if the criteria is someone paid, therefore we can't do business with them, we're not going to do business with anyone.
Every, every bank is, has racially discriminated. There is not a bank out there that hasn't been convicted, fined for racial discrimination.
Councilmember Brettafield, just kind, I guess in the interest of time, all I, what I would like to add, I think that Councilmember Olivier made some good points earlier about, you know, folks committing, you know, some racial discrimination, but coming back and, one, admitting it and then fixing it. So I think as part of our, maybe the report and what you guys bring us back, that's what I will, you know, ask you guys to, to do, to see what is it that they've done so that we, we make a much more informed decision. So as part of the motion, if you guys can add that. Because we can sit here and say, oh, well, this company and this company and this company. I don't want to get into that debate right now. I think that we've already had this debate amongst the body. So what I will ask is to bring that information forward as you guys going through this process again. Thank you. So.
Is it possible to include on this the criteria for them to?
That could be, maybe if, if those institutions have some, I don't know.
I mean, I think, I, I kind of get the feeling that, that staff has been surprised by, by this body. But I, I have thanked my colleagues for thoughtful discussion. I think that has been very, very productive. But I think that what happens when they come back, and we, we encounter the same problem. I'm, I'm going to support this motion today because I think it's a problem.
I have a thought.
But let's give them direction of what the criteria is.
And let me, I want to, I think that's a great point, Councilmember Olivier. And what I, what I would say, and thank you again, Councilmember Brettafield, for bringing this up, and because it gives us the opportunity to have a, a good dialogue. And what I think the direction should be from this body. And what I think the direction should be from this body, is that when, as these things, as we are now aware, we can only respond to things we're aware of. So in this sense, now we're responding, that in our RFPs for our banking institutions, that we probably do ask that question, ask them to respond to that, and also give us the things that they've done institutionally to mitigate that, and then make judgment calls based off of that. Because I want to wholeheartedly agree with Councilmembers Capriolio and Olivier, that people do, you know, people and institutions do change. If we have no knowledge of what those changes are, and what they've done from, from, you know, what they've done to change, we can't make good judgments. So I would add, city manager, as a portion of this, that we do ask that question to the responding entities, and we also ask them the mitigating factors that resulted in that, and then staff review those appropriately. So, Councilmember Olivier, I want to honor that, because you're right, we can't hold everyone accountable for what they did 100 years ago, particularly if they've changed, but they should be telling us what they've changed, and we should be, we should be conscious and conscious of what those changes are.
And then can we legally, City Attorney, put that in an RFP? And are we just limiting it to this particular thing that we're dealing with right now? Because, you know, again, we were surprised, and I appreciate Councilmember for saying that, but are we limiting it just to this one solicitation we're doing? Because to me.
Well, city manager, we could have a broader discussion on a number of issues if you want, but I think for today, we probably should start here, and we should probably talk about that. And whether we talk about it offline, or we bring a workshop back and we discuss it, because we are aware of it, and we should act on it. It should not be a situation where we're sticking our head in the sand and dealing with something, pretending like we can't deal with it, we can deal with it, and we can do things about it, and we should be taking actions to be, to be more responsible around that, around that topic. So that's my suggestion for this issue here, but your point is well-taken, that it may require a larger discussion, and we probably should talk that through.
And then, City Attorney, I mean, is that something that we can legally put in an RFP?
Well, yes, these contracts, including this one, have a full page of nondiscrimination provisions in them. So it would be fair to ask proponents, our proposers, what violations that they had, what's been alleged, claims and actions taken. I think that would be fair.
Perfect. So great, so we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes six, zero, with Councilmember Brandow absent. And just kind of on that note about this, about contracts and, you know, timelines and so forth, I think city manager, it'd probably be great if we, the council, go through, get a workshop on contracts and the city's procurement process. So if we could put that maybe for next month, or in the spring, sometime in the spring.
We can do that in the next couple months.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you so much.
I think that's it. Do I have anything else?
Oh, I think all we have left is closed session. Am I missing anything else?
Nope.
Three C? No, that one was removed. Three C was removed, so I think we are done with the day except for closed session. So let's do closed session, we only have one item, and then everyone is dismissed, and we'll be adjourning. No, do we do that? Yeah.
I wanted to remind you that we would adjourn the meeting today in memory of Judge Jean Gomes.
Perfect.
Again, a great person, thank you.
Thank you. So we won't be coming back unless the attorney has something to report.
Right, we have in closed session litigation, South Central Neighbors United versus the city, there will not be an announcement afterwards.